Ready to please speak up, and since we do have a lot to discuss tonight, a lot of different issues, I want everybody to be particularly sensitive to that fact, give everybody a chance to speak, let's not all talk at once, and please, you know, raise your hand if you, if you need to add to the discussion, and I hope you all do. So, let's start out with, do we have any public comment? And we do. We have a couple places here. Nancy, do you want to sit down here, or?
I wanted to encourage the city council to have a study session or some kind of planning on how they can address the many, many homes in the city that are in the floodplain. Many of those homes, people didn't know they were in the floodplain until that last study was done, and I think it's great that you did do the study and it made it possible to get flood insurance. However, you have no idea what the flood insurance can call. I've had two quotes, 1,800 and 2,200, well, this is going to have to flood. It's a very big area, I know the biggest areas in District Two, I think, but there's certainly in District Three and Four, I don't know about One. But the question is, what can be done to take those homes out of the floodplain? There was a time, there was a plan, I don't know how firm, to raise the bridge on Kipling and Clear Creek, I don't know what that would do, but that was part of it. So, I would hope that there are some studies, or that the city would do some studies, to find out what can be done, and of course, the next big question is how to pay for it. Now, all of you who live in the city know that every time you get your tax bill, you're paying the urban drainage district, and the cities have a lot of money from urban drainage in the past, but I don't know about how recently. Obviously, they would have to help. It isn't, I don't think it was ever designed that every penny that was paid to urban drainage came back to the city, but you know, you really do have to fight for it. And I'd like to ask you sometime to have a meeting, you know, just on that subject, because it's very complicated, and maybe your engineer knows, you know, what to do, but it's, it's very hard on the families, you know, they didn't get flooded last year in those horrible floods, but if they do, and they don't have flood insurance, it's a serious issue. Also makes it difficult to sell a home, sort of brings down the whole neighborhood, same thing for businesses. Anyway, that's probably enough for tonight, but I'd certainly appreciate it if you would put that on a study session some night and dig out what there is, has already been done to raise those properties out of the floodplain. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to remind anyone else who, who wishes to speak tonight, that we do, on study sessions, we confine it to issues that are actually on the study session. We won't throw you out or anything, but yeah, thank you anyway. Did I see someone else that wished to speak?
Mayor Jay, I think just to that point, it is something that they've been working on and looking at things to, to help families, so it is something that has been reported out a few times, so I know they're working on it well.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And could you please go ahead and give us your name and address?
Christine, this is 3940 Balsam Street, and I'm here to comment on the ballot wording for the sales tax increase, option number two. I think it could be reworded in such a way that if it went as it is now, I think it would be voted down because of the debt. The first sentence talks about Wheat Ridge taking on additional $30 million in debt. I'm for the sales tax increase, but when I read that, I went, whoa. Option number one is pretty succinct and clearly stated, but I understand that option two gives the city a little more leverage in how they can spend the money. So I would just try to urge you to find a way to reword that, to ensure that it does pass, because I think the way it is now will alarm some of the voters. And I was a technical writer for eight years, and one of the things that they told us was never assume too much of the end user, so don't assume that people will understand it, it's a little convoluted the way it's written now. And I want to thank the city and the city council for giving us the opportunity to speak about these matters. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments for this night, for this evening? Okay, let's move on to staff reports, item 1A. That be you, Ken? Nope, Scott?
That would be me.
Okay, oh, get to the right spot here. Ken, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first of what we are intending to have of two study session discussions with city council regarding consideration of adoption of the, the current versions of the international building codes, and associated electrical codes, and fire safety codes. We're currently utilizing the 2006 international building codes, the 2003 international property maintenance code, and the 2011 national electrical code. The international code council, which is the governing body who develops and adopts these, these codes with, you know, broad input from the industry, from chief building officials from across the country, adopts new codes every three years, and industry best practices for jurisdictions to adopt them in the, in the next kind of year or two after that, that international level of adoption. So we're currently adopting the 2006 codes in 2010, and the 2011 national electrical code in 2012. So we're kind of in our typical cycle, it's been four years or two years, depending on which code you're speaking to, since we've adopted the newest versions. It's also important in terms of working with the contracting community, most of the, the majority of surrounding jurisdictions have adopted these newer versions of the codes, so for consistency to know that they're, the designers and the contractors are operating under the same set of rules, or a very similar set of rules at least, is helpful for them in doing their work. Back in 2010, the adoption process of the 2006 codes did include a mayor or oral-appointed task force that met, gosh, maybe three or four times to discuss substantive issues related to both the code adoptions and how we'd adopted them in the past, and how we wanted to adopt them moving forward. We made several substantive changes at that time in terms of how we adopted the codes, what local, what codes we did and didn't adopt, and what local amendments we did and didn't make. So that was a good process, it had a, a variety of stakeholders ranging from just property business owners to, to contractors in the community, and the fire district as well. So we're proposing, we're not proposing really any substantive changes to speak of, I'll speak to, to one maybe. So all those policy changes and code amendments that we made back in 2010, in part as a recommendation from building division staff, in part as a recommendation for that task force, remain in place in the way we want to propose to you to adopt the codes in 2014. The one exception that I'd call attention to is that the proposed ordinance adopting the 2012 versions of the codes does propose to add back in one requirement, which we took out in 2010. We removed the requirement to obtain building permits for exterior cladding, so the application of siding, or brick, or stucco, as a standalone project. If, if a cladding is part of a new construction or a bigger construction project, of course, it requires permit and inspection as part of that, but if it's just a standalone replacement in the, in the current versions of the codes based on how they were adopted, it doesn't apply. We've run into several issues typically with property owners, where as a result of poor installation techniques, or just, just poor work, that it typically ends up meaning that you get moisture penetration behind the cladding, and that can result in obviously failure of the cladding itself, but more, more importantly, it can result in structural damage to the building that, that can go un, kind of unchecked for, for many years. So we, and then result in significant damage. So we are proposing that one change, that we would go back to requiring building permits for exterior cladding, but we can certainly discuss, discuss that a lot more. And speaking of that, we're not requesting, though we're certainly glad to entertain a few questions, but we're not requesting a substantive discussion tonight, that's why we've couched this as a staff report. It's a long ordinance, and the codes themselves, of course, are volumes and volumes, and given the length of the agenda tonight, and then also the length of the discussion that could entail, we wanted to give council this, this extra two weeks to kind of absorb the, the ordinance itself, and then, you know, if you have interest in, in looking at those codes or, or contacting myself or John Schumacher with questions that are more substantive in those intervening two weeks, we thought it would make for a more fruitful discussion on the 18th. So that's our approach, and we'd like to move forward fairly aggressive with the ordinance if we can. Mark Westberg is in the audience, and he does a lot of work with floodplain over the years, and along with Meredith Record on my staff, is responsible for maintaining our compliance with FEMA requirements and our certification to be eligible for participation in the, the national flood insurance program, and they've been very successful, and kudos to them, in maintaining a really high level on that, which means our homeowners and property owners have, pay less in terms of the flood insurance rates that they pay. So they've done good work. We're at risk of losing a few of those points if we don't get these codes adopted in September. And I don't say that in a, in a, in a way that wants to threaten council to rush to judgment or to rush to adoption, but that would be ideal, is if we can move forward fairly quickly with adoption of the, the 2012 versions of the codes to maintain that highest level of, of compliance in the, in the FEMA program.
So at this time, we're only to kind of look these over, I noticed some other slight changes within there, maybe some questions before the reports brought forth as a full agenda item on August 18th, but I see that there may be some questions yet this evening?
Patrick and Ken, I, you know, we had the committee four years ago, we had Steve Thomas in from Code Consulting, and I think that he was a good third-party unbiased reviewer of our code, and he came up with some recommendations and changes. Since we have to get this through faster, I would really recommend that we'd have him come back and maybe look at our codes as we move forward, to see if we need to make anything more user-friendly as we move forward, because Steve was unbiased, he was third-party, he was part of that committee, and he's, he's a consultant that actually deals with this every day, he's a, he's an inspector himself, and it may cost a few bucks to bring him in, but I'd like to see him come in and be part of the review process to make any recommendations for that least restrictive environment, or making things more user-friendly for our end users or for the, for the staff. So, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I don't think for a few days he would charge that much money to come in and do a second-hand, third-hand review.
Okay, Mr. Sutton, Starper?
Ken, do you have, I assume that the way we would approach this is to adopt the codes with local amendments?
Correct.
Do you have, have you prepared a list of the local amendments that we would incorporate into that?
And it's a great question, and the local amendments are really part of what's in the, the ordinance as it's drafted, which is, you know, fifty-some pages. So there really aren't a lot of substantive changes, again, other than we're maintaining the local amendments that we adopted back in 2010 when we adopted the 2006 codes.
Could you provide us with sort of those amendments, so that we could, if you refer to the code, you would refer to that section and see what we've amended?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any, Ms. Davis?
So just one other question, is there a summary of what the gentleman that you were referring to recommended from the last, from four years ago?
Well, that is the local amendments, and that's why I wanted him to maybe look at additional local amendments, Mr. Starper brought up the good point, is he looks at what we did four years ago, then also makes recommendations to if we need any new ones, because we do have a different animal here with redevelopment versus new development. What's that?
We could certainly bring a, a summary of those, kind of the, the changes substantively that were made back in 2010, so that you, particularly the newer council members are more aware of what those were.
So would anybody have a problem if, if staff engaged Steve Thomas for a day or two, and had him maybe look at our local amendments and make recommendations, because he's been in the field seeing different changes, and maybe we could take advantage of that?
What type of expense is that?
Oh, hold on, I had Ms. Langworthy.
Well, I just, how, how, because I was part of the other one, substantially speaking, is 2012 really that much different than 2010? I mean, if you take our local amendments to it, is a body of work substantially different now than it was the last time we adopted it? I mean, I guess I'm trying to, because if it's substantially the same, then I don't think we need a consultant, if it's, you know.
So we're on the 2006, so we've passed two cycles, so while I'd certainly say it's substantially changed, there are also substantive changes every time they go through the cycle. You know, I'm, I'm not sure we're in a position tonight, particularly myself, to, and John Schumacher will be here on the 18th, but to, to go into those in detail, but just by way of one example, and we're proposing, as you might have noted in, in the staff memo, that to amend this out of the code, but if we adopted the 2012 codes as written, it would require fire suppression sprinklers in single and two-family homes, where that's currently not required unless you get into multifamily structures. So there certainly are substantive changes, and that's one of them that we've proposed to amend out, because we just don't think that's a good fit for our community, and really brings up other issues that, I mean, you can argue it both ways in terms of the, the efficacy of, of having such a system. You know, I would say Steve Thomas is certainly an excellent resource, he's very active on the ICC at the state level, we cert, he's a, you know, very active in terms of the, providing the training, the annual training program they provide in February, which all of the building division staff participated in extensively, so I think by way of, of those, we're certainly aware of kind of his perspective and, and other local building officials' perspectives on the codes through those processes as well, certainly not opposed to, to bringing someone in again. You know, I, it'd be hard to put a number to it, you know, I'm not sure what that scope of work would be, but we could certainly do that. I would just, I would, I would have this one caveat, which is, he's a very busy man, and it may be challenging to get on his calendar real quickly, but I, I don't know.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. With respect to the, the fire-related issues, has there, what type of coordination or communication do we have with the fire department to make sure that we're both on board with what's being adopted, or?
Yeah, so, so the two districts that, that we work with chiefly, Arvada Fire and Wheat Ridge Fire, have been actively participating, we've met with them a number of times, they've brought together kind of consensus on their local amendments, and we're, we're adopting those, all those recommendations as part of our process, so they're, they're fully on board, and have had in their mind, they've provided us with their final comments.
Okay, and then my next question is, with respect to current code, I don't want to call them code violations, because it's kind of a different thing, but more or less with respect to those doing construction projects, remodeling in Wheat Ridge, and some of the complaints or friction points in that process, does any of that come into play when you're discussing which ones to adopt and which ones to amend out, or is there any friction point in the process that could be ameliorated by, you know, making some changes in this process?
Sure, and I mean, I think that's a big part of what the task force did back in 2010. I don't, at this point, I don't think we've identified any significant ones that we feel. Give you an example of a code amendment we made, you know, the, the bathroom fixture requirement is always a challenge when you're trying to retrofit something like a restaurant or a higher occupancy use, so, you know, we got more, I'll say, aggressive in terms of allowing higher thresholds of occupancy for, for how you trigger bathroom requirements, so that that doesn't become cost prohibitive. So we certainly, you know, actively kind of looked to identify issues like that, that seemed like they're becoming a friction point. We stopped adopting Appendix J when we adopted the codes in 2007, I don't know if Appendix J still exists, but it, it triggered kind of full upgrades of a building at certain junctures, and again, we didn't think that was a good fit for our community, which had such an existing built environment, so those are the types of things we do look for, yeah.
And is there any difference between those that we are opting to amend out, or, or those that we're choosing to adopt that are different from Lakewood or Arvada or Golden?
There's certainly differences in how we all adopt them, and nuances, you know, we could, I suppose, find some examples of that, but I couldn't speak to it specifically tonight, but certainly there are differences.
But more related to adopting to our, sort of, the way that we code our laws, or more substantive related to how we build?
I think probably more, less substantive, more administrative.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Mr. Starper?
Mr. Johnson, can you tell me again why we need to do this in September? What's, what's driving the speed with which we need to address?
We get points for various things that we do that facilitate, I guess, good best practice in terms of floodplain management, and we're coming up to a deadline where we need to have, by the end of our evaluation period in September, we need to demonstrate that we've done certain things, and one of those is check off the fact that we've updated the most recent version of the building codes. And so we get a certain number of points for that, we need those points, frankly, as I understand it from Mark, to maintain our certain level, and if we don't maintain those points, we would drop down a level, and the effective rate of flood insurance for property owners in the floodplain would go up.
Then you think we're going to have adequate time to review the changes that you have in mind, or the adoption that we need, or are we being forced into doing this?
Well, you're certainly not being forced, and, you know, I don't know to what extent we can work with FEMA if we don't make those deadlines, but we, again, our approach has been that we're not really proposing a lot of substantive changes, but we certainly want council to have, you know, a full and open process of feeling like you've had an opportunity to review the codes, hold public hearings, and do those important things. So if we don't make that deadline, I'll be offering my apologies to Mr. Westberg.
And I believe that was some of the work that you've been doing to try to get that flood insurance, the, the prices down by getting some of our areas.
Yeah, we, we get a, we get a 20 percent discount right now, the way things are, and we're just barely over the line for that, so I'm just really nervous about our points. We have done a lot more outreach this year than we did in years past, so, so if we lose those 70 points we get for the, being in the, for the building codes, we may have gained that many back, but with all the outreach we've done, I just haven't had the time to do the math on it, and certainly don't want council to make a decision just based on that, we just, we want to, full disclosure, we want to let's out there. We've done a lot of outreach, and I think our floodplain video is up for an award, so we feel pretty good about that, but, you know, so we may have enough outreach points to overcome losing building code points, but it's just, I'm a, I don't want to use the word I normally use, I'm, I'm really greedy on points, so.
Well, and, and I don't want to, you know, I certainly appreciate the work you've done, I know you've really been diligent about, about the, the storm drainage issue and the floodplain issues, and I, you know, I want to stay there too, I just don't want to, I don't want to get boxed into a corner where we don't have enough time to really adequately...
Right, right, that's certainly, my point, yeah, was not to make you guys to do this by September, it's just, it's just one of the factors that's out there with, with what's going on.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Urban?
Related to that, is there a way to adopt a subset of the codes to, on those which there is no real dispute or analysis needed, and that would count therefore for that adoption requirement, and then come back with an amendment to that adoption saying, we've now considered these others? Is there a way to piecemeal that?
It's a good question, I, I don't think there is, to the extent that some of these, some of the adoption process is the fact that we have to fill in a lot of blanks, so we, we really have to adopt all the codes with certain local amendments that just fill in the blanks, so they don't really function to administer them unless you do that, so we'd really have to fully adopt them, and then we'd have to come back and, and fully amend them, so we'd have to kind of do the same process both, both times.
Is there a way to, to file them with a higher amount and come back in lower, or any way to sort of softball it, and then be able to come back in with more restrictive or something like that? I don't know.
Well, I think, you know, maybe the discussion on the 18th, when we identify issues, or, or not, that, that people think are substantive, that, you know, you want to discuss among yourselves, that that would maybe be the critical juncture to say, you know, do we think we have generally consensus on what our administrative, what our amendments are going to be locally, and if we do, you know, maybe that becomes a moot point.
So, on the 18th, you, as, as requested by Mr. Starper, those amendments will be listed, and, and we'll have an opportunity to go through them, and if it gets troublesome, then we may have to go over the deadline. Mr. Zatulio had a question or a statement?
So, based on the timing, and based on Mr. Starper's concerns, that we don't, we don't rush through this, I would feel more comfortable, because I've been through this, and we know they ran into problems in the past with our building codes and our building department and issues, so we had that third-party review, just a, a quick look over by Steve Thomas to come in and say, you know, we've worked with our staff, we've looked at it, everything looks copacetic to move forward at a, at a quicker level or quicker pace. I mean, Steve is independent third-party, he's not going to try to pull any wool over everybody's eyes, he's, he's going to give council, along with John and Ken, a pretty clear picture if we missed anything, so that's all I'm looking for, is that, that check and balance, so that if we do move forward quicker, for the few thousand dollars it's going to cost, or maybe less, I think we should take that, I would feel more comfortable if Steve was sitting here with John and Ken and saying, you know, I've also looked at it, because from four years ago, we made these amendments, and we're not doing anything that's going backwards or out of line. So I would sure hope that we could get him in just for a day or so, or half a day to look with, work with John and Ken and Patrick, unless somebody has a real heartburn with that, but I don't know why you wouldn't want that third-party review, just to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Assuming that there's no delay or tremendous success, can I get a feeling as to how the council is feeling about having a third-party come in?
I think any third-party would be appropriate, as long as they have the appropriate experience to do this type of review, whether it's this gentleman or another of same caliber. I'm not particularly sold on one over the other, as long as there's somebody that has that sort of unbiased perspective to give us that. I don't know how that works, so.
I would also be interested in a third-party review, whether it's that gentleman or someone else. But I really think it's important that we think about keeping to the deadline in order to obtain the points that we need, because that floodplain issue is a large issue for those residents that are in that floodplain. So I would want us to try to keep to a deadline if we can, if we can obtain that third-party review.
Other commentary?
I'm with, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the third-party, but again, for those of us in the districts that have those floodplain problems, I'm not sure, I mean, I know, I understand that there's differences, but it doesn't appear to be differences. I mean, these, you guys have been working hard on it. It isn't like you just brought this to us and slapped it down and said, okay, now you guys figure it out. And there's a lot of work and time gone into this, and you've made changes that you believe will make life better for citizens, and I'm not sure that I'm willing to delay something that will definitely cause, or could potentially cause more pain by having higher insurance. So I would say yes to it as long as it doesn't impact the timeline.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that generally most people would, would be fine with a third-party as long as it does not impact the deadline, and I imagine there's some sort of a monetary, if it's too high, that they would not, so perhaps so we, is it, that's what I'm hearing that--
We'll check, we'll check with Steve and see what his schedule's like, and, you know, there could be different ways we could work this. Maybe he just comes to the study session and provides advice there if he's not available to spend a lot of time looking at it, but we'll see what he can do for us.
Yeah, not to mire council down with the logistics of kind of our internal deadlines, but I need to get the April, the August 18th packet to Mr. Goff on Friday.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's the kind of timeframe that we're looking at.
Right.
And he's a full-time chief building official for several jurisdictions.
I recall the man. He's quite, quite intelligent and capable.
Well, I would agree with Ms. Wooden. I agree that we don't want to delay it. My point was, let's get that third-party, and I think Steve has a team together, so if you can get anybody from his department or team or whatever, I agree that we don't want to delay it either, so.
Okay, so if there's no delay involved, then we've got a yes on a third-party. Okay? Okay. I think we're ready to move on to item 1B, 38th Avenue Streetscape Access and Temporary Construction Easements.
That's Ms. Bright.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We just wanted to provide council an update tonight on the 38th Avenue project. As you recall, back on July 14th, the council decided to move ahead with the project pending a referendum in November here. And as part of the design for the project and moving forward, and this goes back to the public process that began some time ago when our consultant in Telke was putting together the conceptual plans, the streetscape plans, which provide for the narrower street, amenity zones, wider sidewalks and so forth. It does involve some impacts to private properties, which we've discussed. It sometimes requires temporary easements just to do sloping grading back into private property. There are other locations where, in order to accommodate the amenities we're seeking, there are driveways that have to be narrowed up or combined with others. We have some driveways out there that are as wide as a public street, and in a streetscape amenity zone, it's more appropriate to probably have something narrower while still maintaining access to the public property. So during the public process, Lauren from Ken's staff, Mark Westburg, were actively talking with the property owners, and those questions often came up, like what would happen to my driveway, what would happen to my parking? So we've already begun a good chunk of discussion with some of those property owners. And at this point now, with the council deciding to move ahead back in July, the clock is ticking forward on us with the charter requirement of having to start construction within a year. And these items with the private property owners, the driveways, the easements and so forth, those often take a good deal of time to work out. A lot of times, there's, well, just the discussions of deciding what's the right thing to do, getting legal descriptions, exhibits, so forth. And so we usually have to start that process real early because typical of any project, especially, I'll use the Kipling Trail as an example. You know, we've had to do some right-of-way takings on that too, which has really kind of pressed us on our deadline there. So the purpose tonight is just to let you know that we are continuing to move forward with the property owners on that. So in the event we do have to get a consultant on board to start the plans and specs in November, we've already got a head start on some of this other work. And because we know as we get into design, some of the properties are going to be easier to work out than others, and how we proceed from there wouldn't, you know, with certain property owners, some will probably be more amenable to changes than others. And even, even legally, some properties, when we have to get easements, we sometimes work out deals with the property owner, but maybe the owner, the prop, or the business owner, but the property owner may be in a different state or several owners, and we have to get all these signatures, and it can be a pretty long process. So we just want to give council a heads up that that's going on, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those tonight.
Questions or comments from council? Mr. Urban?
So is it understood that the temporary construction easements, those contracts with those property owners will happen before November, or the process of putting it together happens before November?
We would try and get as much, as done, as done as we could before November, but I think the realization is some of that would probably, you know, happen after November when our consultant is on board actually doing the plans and specs, because these, this process usually does take a while. And while we may have some properties resolved before November, I expect there's others that will be going on during the course of design.
So the, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how, how do we enter into a contract with somebody prior to that election taking place? Wouldn't that need to happen before both parties can know what's going to happen?
Yeah, the actual contracts wouldn't be finalized until after the election. I think what Scott said is, is we'll get as much done as we can up to the election, contracts drafted, agreement between parties, and if the election, if we're successful in November, then we'll be ready to go right after that, after that. No, no right-of-way will be purchased or taken before that decision is made.
And do we have an estimate of what kinds of dollar amounts are involved related to these easements that are being created, or what type of involvement we have in that?
No, other than we, we have a general estimate from the original construction estimates that were put together. We do know that there were some improvements, parking lots mainly, cross, cross-access and easements, driveways. We did figure some of that into the construction estimate, but that's, that's pretty much a general ballpark number right now. We don't, haven't broken it down into detail.
So, but we don't have any, again, any identification of where those funds are coming from, correct?
Correct.
So how do we negotiate in a real estate transaction-type process when we don't have the money to back up that negotiation, then we don't know if that negotiation will result in a contract until after the vote? It seems that you wouldn't do any of that until you've identified the resources and you've also gotten a vote of the people to then be able to, but you can't really fully negotiate if you don't have money and the authority to enter into that agreement until after the vote. It doesn't seem like you can, I can't get there.
Everything would be contingent on the election.
So, but why would someone negotiate with somebody without knowing that they have the money to?
Ken, did you?
Yeah, I just, I think it's not the city's intent to pay for the temporary construction easements.
Well, not necessarily that, but other easements. We're not just talking about the temporary construction easements, we're talking about other rights-of-way purchases that need to be made and--
No rights-of-way purchase, so temporary construction easements that we're not proposing to compensate people for. And the joint access easements are between two private properties or sometimes three or more, but--
But those are based on the construction of streetscape amenities and other things that we don't identify the resources for that. So we're creating these easements, but we haven't identified how to pay for the construction of the items that are going into those easements.
Again, no, no, nothing would be documented until it's contingent on the election. If, the, the, the simple fact here is that if we don't start this process, we'll not be able to start construction within the year time period that is mandated by the city charter. So we wouldn't have a project. So I think we, we need to start this process, otherwise we're, we're not doing our due diligence in, in, in our job. We might as well not move forward, and we're not, we won't be ready.
So I'm assuming most of these are estimates and conversations and acknowledgement of the properties, telling them what's going to happen, the whole--
Drafting of documents, correct, but nothing would be finalized until we know if there's a project.
And I also note in here that the actual cost of these improvements are part of the, of the estimate, of, of--
Construction.
Construction estimate. Ms. Davis?
So I just kind of wanted to mirror what Patrick had said. I mean, my understanding, and I think it's a reasonable process, although awkward, because usually you know a lot of things before you start something. But, I mean, I think the one thing is, is the charter requires that we have a one-year process to, you know, for this to get going and moving. And I think if we don't plan ahead, then we're going to be caught with our, you know, running like crazy behind the, you know, proverbial eight ball or whatever. But I think, I think the other thing is that I feel comfortable with is it, at least to me, it's also a little bit more full disclosure. I mean, I think going out and talking to the businesses, because I think there is that fear out there with talking to some of them as far as, you know, well, what's going to happen during construction? What does this look like? What does this look like to me? Quite honestly, I don't think there's anything wrong with getting out there and saying, here's the plan, here's, here's what we would request of you, here's how it's outlined, you know, no, again, we're not going to know how it's funded and if it's funded, or even if the street width passes until election. But again, as long as we, you know, we present it that way. But I do think, you know, talking to many of the business owners, that is a question. You know, what's this going to look like under construction? How's it going to impact me? And I think, again, it goes back to everything that everyone's asking, is full disclosure. So I understand the principle. I also understand that it's awkward because we don't know where and if this is going to happen, but it's just planning ahead.
Mr. Pond?
I'll reiterate that I think we, I think it's good to hear that we've learned something in the recent process, because I do think Kipling is a good example, that if some, some of these conversations perhaps were undertaken earlier on in the process, we wouldn't have our backs up against the wall right now. So I, I think, I think it's, that is an important lesson, and I think it's worth, worth us learning that and moving forward, so I support it.
Mr. Urban, one more?
Thank you. This may be a question for the city attorney, but if you have a property owner engaged in a negotiation of a real estate contract during what could be the middle of the election, and that property owner chooses to vote no on that ballot question, then they could be accused of operating in, not in good faith for that transaction. And I think that puts the property owner in kind of a tight spot to have to vote yes on that, because that furthers that contract. If they vote no, then it could, it could have an impact.
That strikes me as beyond the reach of this council, but is there someone else who wants to comment on that? And Ms. Langworthy, you haven't spoken yet.
I mean, in, on page two, I mean, part of what you're saying is, is that you think, I don't believe, unless I'm wrong, but what I've read of this is that the businesses may utilize an opportunity to create shared easements, but that doesn't, it's not an obligation by the city to pay for those shared easements, is it? Because it says in here, in other cases, there are opportunities for businesses to utilize those as well as curb cuts on side streets. But that doesn't say that we as a city are obligated to pay for that. Like you said, two or three business, or landowners decide to, you know, instead of having four easements on their property, combine them down to two. Is that our obligation, or is it theirs to take advantage of?
We've proposed to include all those private construction costs as part of the overall project cost, so the consolidation of access drives, which we think is integral to the project, whether it involves a single property or multiple properties, is, is something that we've done cost estimating for as part of the streetscape design process, and we're including those figures in what we think the total project cost should be.
Are there going to be costs that will eventually be borne by us or by the businesses?
By the project.
By the project. I mean, I'm still in support of it. I think that we have to get moving, and I don't want, I don't believe that what you guys are asking at this date is, is signatures that commit people, either parties to an obligation. It's, it's starting a discussion that needs to be done, and it's a lot of properties that could be impacted. I'd rather get the discussion started now, and, and if it doesn't pass, then the discussion ends, and there, that's how it ends. But, you know, we need to get work done, and we have a year, or we have less than a year now. And I don't want Kipling to rear its head like on 38.
I don't believe any real action is required by the council at this time. It's mostly information so that we are informed. So if there's no further discussion, I think we can move on to the next agenda item, which is item two, community outreach, and I believe--
Yeah, we have some, thank you, Mayor. We have some guests who can come to the table, hobble to the table.
Hobble, please.
Our consultants, RD, Seawald, Josh Hamfling, and Shannon Fender are all here with Seawald and Hamfling. They've been working with us.
Whoops, sorry, my mic's not on. For the last couple of months on our community outreach initiative. We'll give them some time to come up here. But as council is well aware, we, at our March planning retreat, we discussed the city's financial situation and long-term financial sustainability. Decision was made to continue investigating a potential sales tax or some type of tax increase in November. We brought on Seawald Hamfling Public Affairs in April to help us with the community outreach initiative. We've wrapped that up just recently. That started with individual interviews of city council and the mayor. That was back in May. Staff toured the city and our city facilities with RD and Josh and Shannon in June. You remember, there was a phone poll done in June, 603 likely voters, Wheat Ridge voters. We presented the phone poll results to you, and then we had five community meetings between July 16th and July 24th, which these folks helped us facilitate. I won't go through all the results of the phone poll, you probably remember that, but just, just to briefly summarize the community meetings, and I'll let RD take it over after that. We did receive a lot of comments. We, we got a lot of, we probably had over 100 people show up at all five meetings, so we were pleased with that. And we, we took their comments throughout, throughout the meeting, wrote them on whiteboards, but then we also asked participants to leave any comments that they had at the end of the meeting, and we compiled all those and kind of broke them down into three major categories. And as in my memo, I state that streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, and drainage improvements and maintenance-type comments were the largest, the most comments that we received. Economic development, redevelopment-type projects or comments were second, and parks and recreation was third. So tonight, we are here with some draft ballot questions and some options for you to consider if you so choose to move forward, and we can discuss that in a bit, but I want to turn it over to RD and Josh and Shannon if they have anything to add about the process.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens who participated, the mayor, council members, and the staff. Appreciate the effort that was made by everyone who took the time to come out and make sure that the community engagement process that was established by the elected officials and the administration, that we did everything in our power over the last couple of months to make sure that folks knew about the town hall meetings through advertising, all of you and your town hall meetings before we began the process, as well as the robo-calls. And so, Mayor, to everyone here, I want to just say thank you very much. It did help in that effort. And I guess, I, I think it'd be helpful for everyone who's either listening or watching to do a quick recap in the town-- Uh, in the town hall meetings, um, uh, we did a couple of things that were very consistent. We talked about the poll that was conducted of 603 folks. Um, I won't get in details, that's a, that's a fairly large poll when you're, that's usually a poll that you do statewide in a sampling. Um, it's not everything, but it's a, it's a piece of information, uh, that establishes a foundation. I was surprised through the town hall meetings that, um, and you forget, forgive me, uh, for not wearing a coat and tie, but I was at the emergency room getting x-rays most of the afternoon, and, um, I did not want to miss this meeting. But, through the process, um, one of the things that was very telling is that folks really believed that, um, uh, city of Wheatridge, uh, uh, needs an investment. Um, the folks through the, the community meetings, um, by a show of hands, I think we had the two largest turnout meetings. Um, at the end of, um, each town hall, uh, folks had an opportunity to ask questions. And, uh, and I think we exhausted making sure that we had at least answered everyone at least once or twice, uh, make sure that, uh, folks understood. I believe there's a fine line between when you talk to folks and you say you're educating them, or you're informing them. And I believe we were informing the citizens about the possible action should this body decide to move forward. And with that, um, we explained the poll, had a discussion. They could take it anywhere they wanted. There were no rules or set agenda. And at the end of, uh, the two largest meetings, um, when folks understood that a one penny sales tax increase, um, as opposed to property tax or mill levy, a one penny, uh, sales tax increase, uh, the citizens, I believe through the summary was telling us and the elected officials that, uh, they believe it's time to do something. And if you designate the penny, meaning that if you establish the penny and break it down into, uh, how you would spend it, it's just not an open checkbook, but how you would, um, establish, uh, that penny be designated for, um, this, this wonderful city, uh, that, uh, folks need that there's an investment, um, we need to protect, uh, preserve. You can say it however you want. We heard a lot of ways about the way people viewed, uh, Wheatridge. But, folks actually believe that, um, now is the time. Uh, when you look at, uh, the money that comes in, and it was a learning experience for us as well about the dollars that come in for parks and rec from the lottery dollars, uh, the dollars that come in from conservation, um, that when you, um, have money coming in towards your parks and rec, which, which you should all be proud of, your parks and rec system, as well as your safety and the infrastructure of maintaining it to this date, um, that with that 1.2 to 1.3, uh, dollars that comes in for parks, uh, one of the things we also learned is that there's no money designated every year to help in some drainage. And so, when you look at all of those things, not only, uh, at the ground level when you're holding a town hall meeting, but if you take the opportunity to fly at 20,000 feet and you have an opportunity to look down over where you would want the city of Wheatridge to be, um, I believe the city of, the cities, citizens are telling you, uh, that they would be supportive of, um, of a one penny sales tax increase if it's designated. And so, I promised myself and Josh and Shannon I wouldn't talk too long, that we could get to your questions, but I wanted to make sure to kind of frame it in a way that allows you that we did not go in with a, a, a set agenda, um, on this. It was nice having the elected officials sit back and kind of watch and engage, um, but I also want to thank all of you, um, for answering questions, uh, because it really helped those folks who were taking time out of their night and away from their families or, uh, maybe a night that was, they were not working, um, to really understand where they wanted to, um, they care about the city and they want to know where it's going. So, um, appreciate, uh, the effort and all the time we spent with you.
Thank you, RD. Uh, did you want to say something, Josh, or do we need to go ahead and go to the council and ask?
Yeah, I think it might be good to, to take some questions now on just the general process and, and the input we received from citizens, and then, then we can get into maybe some of the ballot language, um, options that we presented to you. Um, if you don't have any questions on the, on what RD and I spoke about, we can go straight to ballot language, too.
Do you want to say anything?
Well, no, exactly, yep.
Is Ms. Davis wanting, yes? I, I'm sorry, I just saw you first.
Okay. Um, so, I, I did attend, uh, one of the meetings and it was interesting, and I think, um, from a, a perspective, I think it was interesting. Um, I thought it was positive, and I do think, you know, I think the, the, I don't want to say challenge, but I think the important thing that we need to remember is, um, to educate our folks, because I think there's a lot of people that sit there and say, "This 1%. Um, oh, that's going to put us higher than our neighbor." Not much higher, but it's going to put us higher than our neighbor and we'll be the highest and da, 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 da. But, then you turn around and you say, "Well, what do you pay for property tax?" And it's so much lower, you know, that I think, you know, and I think that was the interesting thing is I don't think it's a service for even our, our community, you know, the, the folks in our community to just look at, "Oh, it's 1% and what, what does our neighbor do?" And, you know, keeping up with the Joneses there, because, you know, I think the other big thing is, is how do we as a city, um, collect funds for our drain water and for our, um, improvements in our streets and those types of things? And I think what was the total, uh, Patrick per household that we probably get a year from property tax?
For a house that's valued at about 250,000, it's about $35.
So, $35 per, I mean, I, we had some folks that, uh, and neighbors and friends that were there from New York and about fell off their chairs because they couldn't believe only $35 is what the city gets from their property tax. So, I think that's one of the big things that I learned, um, I guess as we move forward, um, not as a council, but as a c- interested committee, uh, type of, of for, for, if we choose to do something like this, is that it's not just about the sales tax. It's as we as a community, you know, what dollars do we contribute to our city, um, compared to others and not just only in sales tax dollars, but in fees that other cities have and, um, mills that they have, uh, that go to the city. So, I, that was one thing that it, it, you know, it, you know, my favorite word, knocked it out of the park for a lot of people in that meeting when they realized how little they pay in property taxes. So, that was, that's just a comment that I had.
Christie, a- as I recall, you're pretty informed, too, on special fees that are added to other cities' sales taxes. Was that something that came up in the meetings for you as well?
Yeah, we did, uh, it wa- was. We did, they did ask about the, the PIFs, the property improvement fees, and, and we did talk about that and, and the comparisons that other cities are doing and, and that that is an additional fee besides just the, the basic ones that they perhaps as, as communities voted on, um, that those PIFs aren't something that you vote on. Um, so, you don't really notice it till you look at your receipt. So, those were, they, those were all discussions and it was great. I think, again, it goes back to the education, information type of, of process, and I, I think it really helped and it was really an aha moment for me.
Other questions regarding the, the public, the community meetings or comments? Mr. Urban?
I just had a question, um, related to the priorities that were identified. Uh, in third place, you have both 38th Avenue and the rec center additions. Those seem like two very disparate topics. So, what types of, uh, nuances did you find in the discussion about 38th regarding revitalization? And then, uh, how does that subject compare to the rec center? Because those two things don't seem to gel together.
Uh, thank you, councilman. This is my interpretation, so I, I'm speaking from not only the poll, but from my experience of just going through this community engagement process with your constituents. Um, I think folks had their own, um, uh, definition of revitalization, um, for 38th. Um, I, I think everybody kind of has their own picture of what they believe that may look like. We did explain to folks through the process that the width, um, that there was a, some, there would be a, um, the issue of the width would be going to the ballot. I think as soon as they heard that, they kind of, uh, quite frankly, lessened the conversation. Um, and then folks started focusing on, um, uh, 38th. 38th in the poll, uh, fared really well, and I think that, um, um, folks have their idea. There's different, there's all of 38th, so this, I mean, the way that folks looked at it, in my opinion, were, um, it's not just 38th. I think that roads, um, Ward Road, I-70, all of those things, uh, folks believe that it's identity back to the city. It's extremely important and they, that something needs to happen, um, around those corridors. And, um, and as far as the rec center, um, I was quite surprised. We heard some great feedback on the rec center. Um, I think the conversations are open and public. Folks feel like they would like more, um, more space around the weight room area, um, but most folks believe that they didn't need a new one in, in the other part, in the eastern part of the district. And they felt like the, the rec center currently is probably one of the greatest, greatest rec centers in the state of Colorado now, and, and I think you see that because of how busy it is. Um, compliments to the staff and whoever designed it. Um, it is, it is fully being utilized. Uh, we also heard that they'd like to see more soccer space. Um, so, it's amazing when you go for senior programming, um, down in swimming and other things that come with programming around the parks and rec center, because it's not just brick and mortar. Uh, and then you get to the field parks about having the ability to have more programming around, uh, youth, um, uh, from some of the folks that have just moved into Wheatridge. Uh, when you asked me that question about the rec center, um, i- it's not just the facility itself, it's the programming and space to have more soccer fields. Uh, lacrosse came up. Um, so, uh, councilman, I hope I'm doing a good job of answering your question, but i- it was a little bit of everything, sir, and it was a high priority.
And then, just as a follow-up, on that 63% that favored the revitalization of 38th into a main street business district, what, uh, percentage of that favors the concept of the road diet plan and the, and what percentage of those that come up with some other alternative?
Um, I can look you in the eye, not shoot from the hip, and tell you that when that question came up, we didn't really get into it, because that's not why we, we were brought on, and we were honest with your constituents. Uh, we said, "Look, we've been brought on because your, your city officials and leaders right now are contemplating deciding whether to move forward with the 1% sales tax increase." And, and so, that was our mission, and so, we, it did end up, um, taking up most of the conversation. It was a very thorough discussion with your city staff. The mayor was there for the biggest, probably the bigger meeting we had. And I would say as soon as we were able to get through that dialogue and that conversation, sir, um, one of the things at the very end of that meeting, I will tell you that all but three folks raised their hand and said they would, they'd be in support of the one penny. So, I, I, I don't want to answer the question, because I think to, to your next step, should you choose to move forward, I, I think how you draft the ballot initiative becomes part of that que- answers your question, quite frankly. And so, I didn't, we didn't pretend to have the answers, and we did not go in having the answers. I'm just giving you the feedback that came out.
Well, I guess the, the other question is, uh, more specifically is, based on your research, do you feel like voters would vote for 1% sales tax increase to pay for the improvements to 38th as designed?
In, in my, in my personal opinion, I, I believe that the citizens that showed up and the folks that we heard from, that the majority of the citizens are telling us that if you designate the penny for your parks and rec, your roads, your drainage, drainage was a huge issue, I, I, you know, and rightfully so, um, um, they're telling you that they'd be supportive of a, uh, 1% sales tax increase. And I think that's really important, because it's, we had, we spent a lot of time explaining why not property tax and why not, and not, why not just doing a mill? And so, I think for the folks who are watching, chiming, you know, coming in for the first time, I want to make sure we're very clear, that the 1% sales tax increase, they understood that you, Wheatridge is a place of destination, not just pass-through, so that the folks who decide to get in their car and drive to buy, um, to Apple, go to your, your famous, um, facilities up here, that they're contributing then to the roads they use as they go through your city. And I think that's the difference through the sales tax, um, as opposed to the property. So, yes, I believe, so.
So, um, I, I see a stark difference between the distinction of roads and drainage and the improvement of 38th Avenue as a sort of revitalization project. It, was that distinction made between?
I, I, I think that when we talked about 38th in general, um, there were some policy questions that we did, that, that came up, but we didn't, I mean, we let it, uh, quite frankly, we let the conversation play out, but we did not engage. We, we tried to come back to the agenda, and if you looked at our flyer that was distributed and the ad that was placed and the phone calls, um, I understand where you're going and I get it, but I'm letting you know, um, that was a separate, I considered it a separate issue from the 1% sales tax increase, and I, and I compliment the folks in the audience that they were able to distinguish that they were two separate, separate issues, and that was in all of our meetings. I, I, I would ask, I think that's a, that's fair of, I'd ask to validate that that was fair, that folks did distinguish that. We were there for one agenda. This other issue that's been talked about for the last couple of years is definitely out there. Um, and I think from a policy question, we were able to separate the two, sir.
Okay, but, in other question, other discussions we've had-
Wait a second. Mr. Urban, I, I think you've asked four or five questions and-
Okay.
And, and I think we have a couple of other councilmen that would like to answer, ask some questions. Um, I, did I get away from, I know I did from Mr. Tullio. Did I hear one first from Mr. Strucker or was Mr. Tullio first?
No, I was, I'm going to talk on the ballot question.
Okay. All right, are there other, and I-
I, I just wanted to add one thing, because I, I understand where Mr. Urban's coming from, but I do think they're two separate issues, and I think as a council, by our vote at one of our last meetings, we created that separate issue, that yes, they can vote. We've already decided they can vote on 38th and, and the street width. It's a separate issue, because I think regardless if that passes or not, 38th needs revitalization. It's going to need funding, regardless if it's about the street width, or if it's about getting some new lights or a sidewalk or a, whatever. But, I think, you know, I think there, there's money that's going to need to be put into 38th regardless of the street width, and I think as a council, we already kind of designated that those are two separate issues, hence the reason we voted to put it on the ballot.
Madam Mayor, one last.
Uh, RD had already asked.
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, I, I guess I would, my summary to you all is, I think folks had their own idea of beautification as well as revitalization. Some folks talked about having lamps that had nothing to do with width. Some folks talked about having new sidewalks. Some folks had talked about, um, you know, it'd be nice to have landscaping. And so, um, as best as I can ans- answer your question, councilman, with all due respect, I, I think, I'm in my earlier statement where everybody had their own definition, once we got, um, beyond the width question, uh, everyone had their own idea of, and it wasn't just 38th, if I may, it was, it was other, your major corridors. I mean, um, it was 38th, it's 32nd, it's 29th, Sheridan and, um, signage. And so, when we really got into the discussion, it, I would, it was nice to see folks kind of s- take a step back and talk about signage into the city, um, coming across from your, uh, other boundaries, not just off the highways. And so, I think that was, um, when we looked at it and, and I had that honest feedback, folks were definitely telling us that they, that it, it wasn't just 38th, that they believe that there needs to be dollars, um, for your roads and it, and also for revitalization. And, and I, and I guess I wouldn't, as a former director, uh, deputy director of planning and zoning and building department, my aunt, folks definitely came with their own preset idea of what, what that meant in their head and what they would like to see. And so, and I know you'll continue to have community process and, and on corridors and community input meetings when projects come up, so.
And, and I just have to end with this, and we can move on to the ballot question, but the, in asking, "How are we going to pay for the redesign of 38th Avenue?", uh, the only answer I've been given is that it would be related to a sales tax increase. That is now not the case, that we're not using that to, to pay for the improvements to 38th, then how, how are the improvements going to be paid for then? If they're not paid for by a sales tax increase?
Mr. Strucker.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Sulmit Hamfling, I want to thank you for putting together what I consider a robust program, a public outreach. I attended, I was fortunate enough to attend two of the meetings. I thought the discussion was, was very acute, was very intelligent. I think our citizens get it. I think they understand the difference between the tax proposal and other, other questions that may be on the ballot. Um, I think their comments talk about moving forward in our city. But, mostly I wanted to really thank you and, and thank staff and my fellow counselors for putting together an opportunity to vet this into the public, because I think we had a robust discussion, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Mr. Tullio?
I'm still waiting for the ballot question to talk about.
Oh, the ballot question, right.
I was able to attend two of the meetings, and I felt that overall, some of the feedback was positive in that citizens felt they wanted us to maintain the city, to the drainage, the streets, um, sidewalks, bike paths, that kind of thing. the streets, um, sidewalks, bike paths, that kind of thing. People are in, interested in a revitalization of the city as a whole, and while there is a lot of focus on one certain area, people were overall interested in what can we do to help Wheat Ridge overall, and that's what the ballot question addresses. So, comments were Anderson Park, of course, the pool area, can we put in, um, some kind of a public presentation concert area, interior and exterior, the rec center, different areas of the city came up. So what I felt the impression overall from citizens was, let's maintain our city, let's maintain our parks, and let's revitalize in general. Now, I know the Thirty-Fifth Avenue is a specific area, but the overall impression I received was, citizens are very interested in how the city's gonna look like in ten years overall, not just that one area.
Mayor Meg?
Yeah, please.
Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. When we, uh, started this process, uh, it was only through the community process we realized how important Anderson Park, we, the citizens came back, I think, are telling all of you that, that is a place that, um, um, through conversations of family west restrooms, that if you're gonna take your grandkids there, or you're gonna be a family that just decides to go there. We also learned that a lot of folks come in to use the pool, that's not from, uh, the city, so you have folks coming in, um, to your city to use your facilities. Now they're paying for it, um, but it's interesting to see that, um, and that's why I compliment all of you, the mayor and the councilmembers and the city administration, city manager, because it wasn't a preset, uh, um, list, um, there were things that we learned through the community process, to your point, councilwoman, that really kind of came through, through the top that will hopefully help you, should you decide to move forward and should the voters decide to approve it. I think that gives City of Wheat Ridge to, to address, um, some longstanding issues that the city will get by, but the citizens are telling you they want to keep it at a certain standard here, there's a lot of pride in this community, they believe in it and they want to invest in it, and so, um, just wanted to make that point there.
I was able to attend most of the meetings, and, uh, there is a lot of interest in our city, um, both within and out there, that was very aware, uh, or clear to me, because there was a lot of good input. Um, not all of it was good, of course, you always get a few arrows, but overall, I think very, a lot of excitement about the city. Um, and I think we should move on. Mr. Tullio?
Thank you. Um, it's, it's my understanding that in a ballot question, if you want to bond, you have to say you're gonna bond when you propose a new sales tax increase, is that correct? You have to specify some type of bonding mechanism so that the voters are voting on the increase and the, and potential bonding?
There's a, there's a few different ways you can do that. You could have two separate questions, you could just have a simple, um, sales tax increase question and then a separate bonding question, or you can have a sales tax question and ask to bond also, yeah.
So, looking at that, I think that bonding gives the city an opportunity, but we have to have a bonding question for, because of Tabor, we have to say we're gonna bond, okay?
Correct.
So I think bonding gives the city a way to get a lot of projects done quickly and efficiently, so I do like option two of the ballot question, because it, or we could split it out and have a, I don't know if you want to have three questions, but, you know, one about the sales tax increase, one about the bonding, but I liked option two. The only thing I, concern I had, and this, I got a call from Janice Hoppy and a few others today, they were asking if we could, in this option two, talk about the sales tax cre- increase first, six million dollars, da, 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 then bring up the bonding, so that it's not debt right away, it's gonna be here, we're gonna ask for a six million dollar, one cent sales tax increase for perpetuity, da, 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 and then by the way, we're gonna bond to do these projects, and the projects are good. I think the only thing we should add to this, I don't want to micromanage this, because that's by my own principle here, but I think stormwater drainage is different than floodplain drainage, and I think that we should add a comment about floodplain drainage, because I've heard that from a lot of people, we even heard it from Nancy Snow tonight, and the floodplain drainage gives us the opportunity to go and address certain projects on Clear Creek or Leeta Gulch, wherever we need to do it. So stormwater is on the streets, you know, right now in our, in our, in our community, where the floodplain could really benefit a lot of those folks, those two hundred and fifty households have been added to this floodplain, they're paying a lot of money in insurance now. If we could do some projects with this money to betterment of Clear Creek and Leeta Gulch, they wouldn't have those issues. So I, the only thing I would recommend is we somehow flip an option two that it would say, shall the city go for a one cent sales tax increase with six million dollar, blah, blah, blah? Then talk about the bonding and say that bond is gonna be used for, this is all good here, but also mention floodplain drainage along with stormwater drainage. That's all I gotta recommend.
Thank you. I don't know that we've made a declaration that we're going to ask for a one percent sales tax increase.
I have not heard that.
I've not heard that, and I do think we need to complete that discussion. Um, okay, we have a one percent sales tax increase, uh, and I, it looks pretty affirmative on that. Okay, good, now we can move on to the...
So that's my, that's my comments about the ballot question in general, I don't know if anybody else has any...
Well, let's have some comments about the ballot questions. Mr. Strucker?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, I agree with my fellow counselor from District One. Um, I, I probably would put the phrase, shall the, you know, shall the city of Wheat Ridge debt be increased, uh, after the, after the phrase, uh, taxes, uh, you know, um, so it would read, shall the city, shall the city taxes be increased up six point four million dollars annually in the first year, uh, and by whatever amounts necessary raised annually thereafter, and shall the city of Wheat Ridge debt be increased up to thirty million dollars in the maximum repayment, not to exceed fifty-three million dollars? And then another couple of things, I noticed the difference between, uh, option one and option two is in the bullet points, we have in option one, uh, critical facility and infrastructure projects, and we don't, um, I, I think we should put that word facility, I don't know if that was, uh, by design or, or omission by, uh, by purpose, but I would certainly put, uh, critical facility and infrastructure projects to allow Wheat Ridge to operate, maintain, and improve roads, so that we put operate in there.
Yep, that was not done but by design, so.
Okay, uh, and then in, also in conjunction with, uh, with what my associate said in District One, uh, maybe we could say, and improve roads, bridges, uh, flood mitigation and stormwater drainage systems, or something like that, or flood...
Flood, floodplain, I thought the floodplain really clarified it for some of those folks who were...
Flood pain, flood...
Floodplain drainage or...
Drainage mitigation or something like that.
Okay, so the mention of floodplain...
Or, or flood mitigation, I, you know, then it's, whether it's on the plain or the...
Yeah, cause there's floodways, there's floodplanes, there's flood, maybe just flood, something in general.
Flood mitigation.
I thought the stormwater was good, and just adding floodplain and stormwater would clarify the two, but that's what, I mean, I, I agree with the facility, I agree with...
Just get flood in there somehow.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, with that, I, I, I think those are my comments.
Other comments? Ms. Wooden?
I do agree with the floodplain, because that really affects a lot of people in District Four, because that whole area north of Clear Creek is in that map, and their insurance is gonna go up dramatically, and it will impic- impact them a lot, and we do not want to see a lot of those homes, um, either be damaged or not, uh, not, not be able to sell on the market. So I would agree adding the floodplain. Um, in addition to the Anderson Park, this is just a question in general, do we want to mention other parks, do we want to mention the recreation center, or, I'm just curious how, and, I know Anderson Park was the focus, but do we want to add anything else in there? Other park improvements?
You, you could add, you could make it more sim- similar to option one bullet where it talks about more parks in general.
I, I would suggest that, and...
Parks in general?
Mm-hmm.
And I know this wouldn't be mentioned in here, but I think it's important that when this, if this is brought forward, that the city currently has no debt, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that fairly unusual?
There, yeah, there's a lot of cities that, that, um, have COPs, revenue bonds, GO bonds out there that, yep, they, they use that to, to fund infrastructure projects.
And I think that's important to point out, that we currently have no debt, and so we're looking at doing some major projects to improve our city, and that's not being added on to something we're already paying on.
And that would be part of the, um, Tabor, uh, you have to submit to part of the blue book, um, I think you have to list any other debt that you already have, so, um, that would be, um, information provided to the voter.
And, and I think that's important to point out, because if, if the money can be bonded against, these projects can happen quicker. So if you have a family that's using Anderson Park right now, and will say, oh, in ten years, you'll get a multi, you know, multifamily bathroom, no, people want this, that they can use it now, and the people with the floodplain issue want a solution now, and so I think it's important that we point out, I don't know if you pointed out in the ballot or not, but that these things will happen quicker if they can be bonded against.
And, yep. Marty?
Artie?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman. Thank you for bringing that up, cause I, I want to make sure that in our present, when we presented this to the, in the town hall, uh, meetings, uh, we made sure that the folks who, uh, participated and, and the items that went up on the website in the presentation, that we did actually talk about the bonds, and I think, um, I just want to make sure we're really clear on that. Uh, we did not get a lot of negative feedback on that once it was presented, cause I think folks understood that, um, if you do move forward and you, and you can bond, folks realize that they don't have to wait ten years, or you have to, you know, when is it coming to my neighborhood? This is something that allows the city to move forward quickly, um, and expedite the process, so that if they do decide to vote yes, they're actually gonna see a return quicker on their, the action that they took at the ballot. I just want to make sure that, uh, we highlight that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, I think that, um, I agree with Mr. Strucker's about the facility, and I also agree about the rec center being in there, but I also think that because we have two hundred and fifty homes in the floodplain, we should say floodplain, and then if I use flood somewhere else, I think floodplain is very important, cause those two hundred and fifty homes know what that means, and they're gonna see that, we can maybe see some relief for them. So I think should say stormwater, floodplain, and flooding, or whatever you want to do, but I think talking about flood, floodway or floodplain will trigger those, those folks who've been really dealing with this for the last year or two to understand that we're trying to address their needs.
Maybe Scott or Mark, I mean, is that an accurate terminology to use? It's, it's not gonna cause any restrictions for us, that we couldn't use it somewhere else, or?
Yeah, all of our regulatory areas, the floodplain, um, the two pieces are what's called the flood fringe and then the hun- the floodway, so floodplain's all-inclusive. So that, that works, that works fine.
Perfect. So...
Okay, any more commentary? Mr. Pond?
Thank you, I appreciate all the comments, including the public comment that we received, uh, cause I do think, um, I do think, eh, we need to be careful about how we choose this and the success of the ballot question, as well as the success of moving into the work. Um, along those lines, one question, then I'll give you my comments, the timing of this. Uh, so we're talking about it tonight in terms of starting to craft and throw out wordsmith and choose and all that, but at some point it needs to be finished and it needs to be, and it needs to be, uh, action needs to be taken on it. What is that time?
Uh, it was due to Mr. Goff last Friday, um, so we are, we are wordsmithing as we speak, but, um, if, if you're gonna add a bonding question, um, it has to be done by ordinance, so it's, requires two readings, so that would be August eleventh and August twenty-fifth, so there would be an opportunity to, to amend on, on both of those, those readings, um, so this, this will have to go out in the packet on this Thursday for first reading.
Okay, thank you. Um, I generally agree with the comments of, uh, of clarification or inclusion in, inside of the bullet points. Um, I, uh, I also agree with, um, with Councilwoman Wooden that the, uh, rec, other rec facilities I would, would like to see in, in the language, I do think that option two is a little bit more restrictive than I would like to see, because I do feel like there's better, there's other options inside of parks and rec in general and other rec center facilities, so I'd like that. Um, I, I will, I would say, um, going back to the input that was received in some of the, in both the, the public meetings as well as the polling, um, economic development and redevelopment is not really stated in, in here. Maybe it's implied, I don't know, but it's not very clear in these bullets, and so I guess I'm interested in know other people's feelings and/or to kind of enter into a conversation about how, um, you know, talking about economic development projects, uh, could be included into the description. Seems like there's a reason to do that, because we are, that's what we heard from, from people in our meetings or in our, in our polling. The, uh, I, I suppose I agree at least with the idea of, uh, of, um, trying to amend the language of option two in order to, um, in order to try to wa- walk into the logic of the, of the debt, as opposed to putting it in the first, in, into the first sentence, but I, I do think we, and this is kind of why I asked about the timing, is that I do think we need to understand the, you know, wha- perhaps what's the sensitivity of that issue ultimately, um, and whether or not we can, um, you know, what, what, what that, what that looks like, cause I certainly agree that it's important for a standpoint of getting delivery of projects, um, done, but I want to make sure that we have a path to success as well, so. Uh, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of time to talk about that or to gather information, though.
Well, just, yeah, to respond to that, that came up a couple of times. Um, when, when you do have a Tabor question and, and a bonding question, there, there is very specific language that you must use, um, sometimes you might be able to put it in different orders. Um, we could see if we could put the, the sales tax first, the six point four million, and then the debt second, but, but, um, I've only seen it this way in any ballot question that I've seen, so we'll, we'll look into that and we'll have, if, if we can change it, we'll make that change for first reading, so that, um, it's, the debt section is, is second. Um, but again, there is some, and this is to address, um, that's the public comment we had earlier too, that, um, option two does get a little more confusing, but, um, we're required to do that because of Tabor. But we, we could, we could mix it, maybe we can mix it up a little, we'll look into that.
Mr. Tullio?
A question for the city attorney, can this ballot question, in the past you've said that these ballot questions can be by resolution or by ordinance, can this be by resolution on one reading? Mr. Dole?
Just a straight sales tax increase, you could do by resolution, but if it's a bonding question, it has to be done by ordinance. That's per our city charter or code.
Any other commentary about the language of the ballot? Mr. Urban?
I don't know if it's necessary for the language of the ballot or not, but, uh, recently in Denver, in the past few days, they went through a bond sale, where the, the bonds were five hundred dollars apiece, they expected them to take up weeks of sale, and they sold out in two hours, and they raised, I don't know how many millions of dollars in that process. Does that type of, uh, mechanism require any type of language in the ballot to facilitate that, or is there any advantage to that avenue of financing compared to traditional bond sales? Are you gonna speak to it?
Well, I just want to make sure that what the council members speaking to is it's the mini-bonds that were just posted.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, my understanding is no, that, um, this is a, um, this would allow you to structure it, um, in different fashion. Um, we would have to, um, get, get that determination from our bond counsel, but, um, my understanding is that this, this allows you to structure it in different, different formats, um...
Doesn't preclude that.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Tullio?
Uh, Mr. Goff, do you want to get consensus on this tonight?
Well, I, I think we, yeah, this is eventually, but, um, I think we need to discuss this a little bit further, um, you know, for the, for the bonding question, you know, we were kind of modeling this after Commerce City somewhat, um, they had a, um, a question last November, and they, they picked five specific projects though, and their campaign was five projects in five years, so they actually had, um, costs to those projects, so they, they knew what they needed to bond for. Um, this is a, a little more general, um, we do have, um, some estimated costs for the Anderson Park revitalization, um, but the critical infrastructure is more general. Um, so I just put this, this thirty million I put in here was just an example, um, that you could do. Um, we have, do you want us, do you have a question first or before I finish or?
No.
Okay, keep going, okay. Um, we, we did, um, we went out to George K. Baum and, and had them run some numbers on a, a one percent increase of what that would generate for the city, and first of all, our city charter allows us to bond up to about ninety-six million, I believe, and that's based on, it's three percent of the, the city's, um, actual value of all property in the city, so that equates to about ninety-six million right now. Um, but, um, George K. Baum ran a couple scenarios, the first scenario was bonding against just, just the one, the new penny, the one penny, um, and we could bond up to about sixty-eight million, um, on that one penny with it, the total payback would be about a hundred and seven million with interest. Um, if you bond against the new penny plus the full faith and credit of the city, um, we could bond all the way up to our city charter limit. bond all the way up to our city charter limit of even more, about 98 million. So, um, ju-just to give you, um, a, a little sense of, of what limit, what those, those limits are. So we need to identify, I think, what we're comfortable putting, um, on this question, how much we'd want to bond up to. Um, and then I would have to get those numbers run by, um, George K. Baum again to see what, um, that maximum repayment would be. And in, in this example, it's 30 million, the maximum repayment may be close to 53, 60 million. So we could get that exact number that has to go in here. Um, but, you know, are we, are we going to equate tho- that bonding amount to specific projects? Or, um, is it just going to be a, a maximum amount that you're comfortable bonding for? And then city council can make those decisions to start, um, making decisions on our critical infrastructure needs and, and some priorities on drainage and, and street reconstructions and asphalt, um, repair, um, all those types of infr- drainage projects that we're, that we haven't been, um, completing over the, the last few years. So.
Yeah.
So that, that, uh, that dollar amount is a, a discussion point that we need to kind of consider. Um, the total amount estimate for Anderson Park, um, is about, let's see, have it here somewhere, about 14 million is what we're estimating. That, that includes, um, real, uh, improvements to the pool, which maintenance improvements that need to be made. Um, it includes, um, a new Anderson building, um, and then a new, uh, changing facilities and, and facilities that would, um, support both the pool and the Anderson building. They'd be shared. Um, it would include some, um, uh, an outdoor stage area, ban shell concession and booth areas. Um, and it would include moving the park's operation shops over to Public Works to open up that space there. So there's more parking available. So it's kind of a big package of revitalization of that park. Um, that's about 14 and a half million. Um, and, you know, pu- on the Public Works side, on the critical infrastructure side, you know, we, we've identified millions of, of dollars worth of projects. But at what level do you want to bond out for that to get started? Um, you know, we, we're about $6 million behind in, um, just our annual maintenance projects. So, um, I, I would definitely recommend that we bond enough to, to catch up with, um, our, maybe Scott could speak to this too, but our major, um, road reconstruction. Um, I think we could identify, um, several million of drainage infrastructure that we could, um, maybe bond for to get started.
For a floodplain?
Flood, floodplain, yes. And drainage. Um, so thirty, so just, in summary, 30 million was just a placeholder until we could have a discussion on what you would like to see in there.
Yes. Ms. Davis?
So I just have one question because I know one of the things that we also talked about, which I know our city wants to see, is the, um, the redevelopment at the Cabela's or Cabela's site. And I think that's a big infrastructure.
Yeah.
Cost at, um, you know, the I-70 and making the ramps and, and that type of thing. Do we have a ballpark of that?
We do. The, uh, the hook ramps, um, off I-70, which is a major component of that project that has.
Slowed things down.
Slowed things down because nobody can, can fund it. It's, that portion of it, it's about, um, it'd be finishing what we've started at 32nd Young Field. It's about another 10, 12 million dollars. So, and we do have numbers on that. So that could be part of, of, um, your maximum bonding capacity, if that's something you want to put in. And keep in mind, obviously, you know, if you, if you just go up to a certain level, you're going to have additional, um, monies available just to do ma- um, other minor maintenance and, and, um, improvements, um, to parks and roads, um, on an annual basis.
And that in mind, I know the hook ramps was a, kind of a short-term, uh, solution, right?
No, it's part of the final, permanent.
So that is the final. So if we get, okay, let's just pretend.
Yeah.
Uh, if we get Cabela's back, they say, oh, we're, you know, we're back and we want our flagship here. Okay, okay, let's pretend. But is there going to be have to, because I know that the hook ramps was, my understanding from you was just kind of a, a lower volume fix. But if there's a potential for a bigger volume over there, that there could be more significant?
It is. Well, as you, as you know, we're, we're working on a traffic study to see if we can phase this development in. Phase both the, the development of, of commercial and then also, um, phase in the, the infrastructure that's required. Our initial look is that we, um, at the project is we feel that we can build about 300 to 350,000 square feet of additional retail or office out there without doing any other improvements. Um, to go up to another, to add another 300, 350 on top of that, we'd probably have to do the hook ramps. But to add, to go above that, we'd probably have to do the interchange on Highway 58.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I, if I do the math, if we, if we sort of have 14 million in the Anderson building and we got 6 million in, in sort of deferred maintenance in our roads and, and bridges, we're, we're sort of already at 20 million, which is sort of two-thirds of the, of the 30 maximum that we've got. But if we said that we may spend another 10 million more or less to, to kind of get, uh, the Clear Creek Crossing project into, into production and, and if we hadn't, you know, if we had a retail presence there, um, you know, that takes the 30 million. Um, and, and actually, when you, when you put that, when you put that investment into the city, um, we get a return on that because those are retail dollars and people are spending, you know, hopefully spending money there and returning some of those revenues into the city. That's how we can afford to do this. But I might, I, I might think we might be, because, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to go through this program and not have given us sufficient revenue coming out of it. So to me, 30 seems a little low. I probably would, would maybe make a proposal that we put it at 40 or something in that poll.
I agree.
And the other, another, um, thing that when I heard, you know, sort of distilling in the, in the public meetings that we had and the listening sessions, um, I would want to, I would ask the question is economic development and redevelopment of the city seem to be a priority to some degree. Would you, would you agree with that, Mr. Sewell?
Mayor, man?
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, yes, very much so. I think, um, um, your citizens through the community engagement process were telling you that, and through the poll, uh, that they do believe in those projects, majority of folks, and they see, they understand the benefit. Um, I guess that's the way I'd summarize it.
Okay. And I guess sort of in connection with that, I would want the language in the ballot measure, however we need to draft it, and perhaps we would consult with our attorney, but that we, is that we have the ability to, to use some of these dollars for economic development of our city. Thank you.
Mr. Giattolio.
I would have to agree with Mr. Starker on that. I think 40 million, because we need to have some money in there for the floodplain mitigation, plus the 6 million for Public Works, 14 million for the Anderson, 12 million for the hook ramps, if we needed those, and then a number for the floodplain and then some residuals. I think 40 million would work for me. And, and then we should add an economic development in the infrastructure part and for economic development. Revitalization, however you want to put that.
Seeing a lot of nod hitting, head nodding.
Head nodding.
Yeah, right. Great. Uh, if, if my, add my two cents, that's, that's been a, um, something that I've been greatly concerned about because we do have to, uh, keep, uh, feeding the ability to go forward so that we're not asking for another sales tax or bonding or, excuse me, property tax or, or whatever in future years. With, part of this has got to be so that we can build our future.
Would you like to see that as a, a separate bullet? Um, or just kind of craft it into?
You know, my preference would be sort of to craft it into the critical infrastructure at the end of that.
Mr. Pond.
Yeah, well, I, I also think to answer that, I think it, it kind of, it, it kind of depends, right? If we go down a project list, and I don't think we've decided that yet, but clearly that's a little bit different than, than how it's written right now. If we go through a project list, then economic development has to kind of hang out and be, and be articulated in some other s- space in the, in the, in the ballot and question. If, if we're doing it more like it is right here, then I think it either can be added into the critical infrastructure bullet or, you know, like I said before, it might, it might be worthwhile for it to stand, to stand alone.
Do you, yeah, that's a good point. Going, going back to, you've identified, um, well, Anderson will already be in there, but the 6 million for deferred maintenance, 10 million for the hook ramps. Do you want those identified or, or just we're going to, that's?
Isn't, isn't that improving roads and bridges?
Yeah, it is. But do you want it identified more specifically?
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Good. So that answers Georgia's question, right?
Right.
Okay.
More? Anything else? Ms. Langworthy?
I just have a small question. I mean, I'm all, I'm all for the 40 million. I mean, it's, 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 we bat it around like it's a small thing, but it's not. It's a very large amount of money that has to be paid back. And while it's being paid back, we're not getting that penny, correct?
We're not getting a portion of it, whatever the debt service is. Um, and we'll have those numbers run. Um, it, it won't be the full 6 point, um, potentially 6.4.
So there would be some of that money left over to be able, okay. Because that's what, that would be my concern is we're doing all this work, but the, the 6 million for deferred payments just gets us caught up, but it doesn't take into account the, the future maintenance that, you know, could potentially, you know, still get deferred. So I want to make sure that we're, when we're looking at this number, that we're aware that, you know, this just brings us up to current. It doesn't look at or address a very long list of programs that need to be fixed in our streets and that need to be fixed. If we went back to that DIRG Task Force Committee and looked at their list.
Right. I think that would have to depend on the future revenues after these projects.
After these are done. So that, so those are.
Initially, I think we could start doing some smaller ones.
Okay.
With the additional monies that are available.
Okay.
Help us with our $2 million a year maintenance that we need at this, that we're not able to do now.
That's essentially the 6 million that we're behind on and plus.
But going forward, I mean, we don't just play a catch-up and then we're in the same spot.
No, we'll have, um, once these bonds are paid off, um, we'll have all the, all the, all the money, the new revenues plus.
We can maintain.
Correct. That's, yep.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Um, with respect to the addition of an economic development type, uh, element to this ballot language, it, it seems somewhat vague, whereas these other, uh, elements are very concrete as to what they are. And I'd like to see some way to try to make that a little bit more tangible for people because it, it does seem as though you're sort of just leaving it a hang, as a hanger-on. It doesn't really identify the specific use for that. I don't know exactly how to go about doing that, but it is in contrast to the other more specific items that are being identified.
But we're not going to identify those specifically.
Right. But I'm just, it's, we do identify Anderson Park and we do identify that, you know, we're talking about stormwater drainage systems. That's, that's specific.
Floodplanes.
Did we not decide not to say Anderson Park, but more just recreation facilities?
Oh, okay. No, no, not specific. And?
I thought we had decided Anderson Park and.
And, okay.
Because Anderson Park was a big, um, item from the.
Basically used the, under option one, that bullet point where it talks about.
I mean, that, I mean, I guess to me, that point also goes, then we're not also identifying hook ramps and, you know, I mean, at some point, you got to either be vague or spell it all out.
Mr. Giattolio.
Uh, to address what Ms. Langworthy was saying, isn't this 40 million though is going to be strictly on the one penny, right? The three cents that we're actually generating will still be available for other projects.
Oh, yeah.
Correct? Right, okay.
Yep.
I just want to clarify that. So the one cent is going to be tied to the 40 million in this ballot question, the new one cent. Then the other three cents are still available for, say, public safety, all of our different other programs that we have.
Yep, correct.
Okay. So do you want me to take a stab at the consensus? Or not? Or you got it all?
I, I, maybe, do you want me to, to read the consensus? Based on what I think I heard?
Yeah, go for it.
The everybody's ready? Everybody's ready? Um, so consensus is to move forward with option two, um, with the following amendments, um, increasing the debt to 40 million. Um, then the, uh, maximum repayment number will have to change. Um, we'll get that from our bond folks. Um, in the first bullets, we add, it's, we add facility, critical, um, and add facility before infrastructure. So critical facility and infrastructure projects to allow Wheat Ridge to add, operate, um, maintain and improve roads, bridges, stormwater and floodplain drainage systems. Um, and essentially bring the second bullet from option one down and include that whole thing. So, um, improvements for the construction, installation, operation, maintenance of parks and recreation improvements, including revitalization of Anderson Park to improve its overall effectiveness and efficiency as a multi-generational family activity park, including improvements to the outdoor pool and facilities and the Anderson Recreation Building. Um, we'll also see if we can, um, move the language around a little bit to put the sales tax portion first and the bonding second. And, um, I think that was everything I heard.
You missed economic.
Oh, I'm sorry, economic. And, um, add some type of language, um, concerning economic development into the first bullet point under critical infrastructure.
So moved.
Okay. Is that good or do we have more questions on this one? Mr. Starker? Nope. All right. I need a consensus vote. Are we all in consensus with this language on this question? Thank you very much. Thank you, Artie.
Thanks, Artie. Hope your language is better.
No, actually, they need to stand.
I, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to kick you before the meeting.
Oh, that was you.
Oh, I lost my first page. Oh, I know, I made notes on it. Do we need a break? Is that what someone asked me for?
Well, we did, we did it right.
Lost a couple.
We did it right this time.
As soon as I get our attorney and commute him out. You two ready? Or you can go in the hall if you want to continue. Okay. So, thank you. So our next item is code enforcement strategies. And as you all remember, this became, um, came out of your council retreat this year as a priority. And, um, you know, it was kind of, in my thought and my understanding was it was a, a general sense of code enforcement and not, not necessarily just code enforcement, but how do we kind of lift the city up? How do we make the city look better? So that includes a lot of code enforcement, but it also includes a few other aspects that, um, we all realize that we need to have a discussion with you so that you understand that, um, improving code enforcement or putting resources just into code enforcement may not impact everything that, that we understand as a problem. So, so staff has been working very hard over the last few months and, um, really broke this down into, into several categories of, of different areas that we think really could impact the city and the way the city looks and, and the way you, we view the city, the way the city is perceived. So Chief Brennan is going to take the lead, but we do have Ken and, and Joyce here and Scott is also here because it impacts all, all of our departments. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, 60 slides, no more than that. It's, it's really pretty short. So, uh, wanted to give you tonight just an overview of our code enforcement efforts. And really, uh, uh, the purpose of, of the PowerPoint is, is to help paint a picture of, of what we see as city employees as it pertains to code enforcement issues in the city in, in essentially six topical areas. Code enforcement is, is just not what our community service officers do in dealing with nuisance code and some commercial code violations. It's really much broader than that. It encompasses public safety certainly, but also zoning, cleanliness, environmental issues, stormwater, floodplain issues, signs and landscaping. So to tee this up, what we did as, as, as a city team was staff from the police department, community development, public works and parks, started to sit down and meet on Wednesdays to talk about our current code enforcement strategies, what we're doing today, and what we thought we could do in the future and what some of that might look like. And really what we hope to gain out of today's meeting is just some discussion in regards to what you would like to see staff begin to work on, or maybe you feel satisfied with, with our current efforts and, and, and we're good. And, and getting that direction will be valuable as well. So to sort of tee this up tonight, what I wanted to talk about a little bit was just to, to go over just a couple of things to remind council of where we've been with, uh, you know, our code enforcement efforts and how code enforcement's played a role in a lot of the, you know, the major philosophies and visions of the city. So in Wheat Ridge Vision 2025, we talk about how we want Wheat Ridge to be a beautiful city. We want great neighborhoods. We want vibrant activity centers, multimodal transportation, environmental stewardship, and we want an active, healthy, uh, lifestyle and sort of that hometown feeling and pride. And all of those pieces to that vision play a role in code enforcement in terms of what all our departments do. Your city council goals, uh, provide, you know, financially sound city, providing quality service, economically viable commercial centers, desirable neighborhoods, more attractive Wheat Ridge. Again, you know, it's, it's sort of like a compass pointing in, in the direction, you know, that's, that says that code enforcement has a role in the city in terms of what we do and how we go about doing that. In the repositioning Wheat Ridge study that was done back in 2005, there, there were several pieces to, to that document that sort of spoke to code enforcement issues and, and the attractiveness of the city and some considerations that council needed to take. Page one, looming in, in, yeah, code enforcement, yeah, you know, we, we gotta deal with it. Treating trash accumulation through code enforcement without incenting owners to police their own property to higher standards will not work. So certainly a realization that it's just not the enforcement piece. It's the education piece and it's how you incentivize, you know, some, some of that work citywide. And we do that in some, some areas. And then in appendix seven of that document, you know, citizen, it mentioned a lot about citizen concerns. And I just pulled out, you know, one statement out of many, many statements about code enforcement that were in appendix seven and, and essentially said, "City's not nice to look at." So briefly, just on the history of, of code enforcement, prior to, to about 2000, code enforcement was primarily in community development, uh, departments. There was not a lot of attention paid to, um, uh, code enforcement in terms of a citywide approach. In fact, uh, you know, if you, if you just look at any historical documents about the move of code enforcement to the police department, uh, there's, there's a lot of discussion in there about code enforcement being politicized and, and some districts not being enforced at all at the, at the direction of policymakers. But in 2000, I think, you know, as, we had some forward-thinking policymakers that said, "Hey, we need to do more from a code enforcement perspective and where is the best place to put that?" And, and the police department really is sort of a regulatory kind of agency. I mean, we enforce laws and, uh, you know, write tickets and arrest people and do a lot of those things. And policymakers felt that putting that code enforcement function in the police department is pretty important. Uh, they didn't give us more people. We didn't, we didn't get any more people to do that. We just added that, council added that to, uh, the plate of our animal and parks officers. And they became what was known as APCO, Animal Parks and Code Enforcement Officers. And that worked good through about 2005. And in 2005, we had the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Report. And, you know, the process of saying, "How can we do code enforcement better?" We weren't having a lot of success with code enforcement in our criminal courts and that due process model. It required us to, uh, to warn and then write a criminal citation. And, and that required an arraignment in four to six weeks. And then if somebody pled not guilty, then, then you were four to six more weeks out. And we had cases when I got here in 2005 as the police chief that were, were stuck in the court system for 12 to 18 months and not resolved. And that was pretty frustrating for other property owners. It was pretty frustrating for council members, my code officers and me as a chief. So we transitioned in 2007 to this administrative model of enforcement or administrative enforcement model, which really took code enforcement out of our municipal courts and put it in an administrative hearing process. Lesser standard in terms of burden of proof. It's a preponderance of the evidence. It's in front of an administrative hearing officer. And really, the issue was whether or not, you know, the CSO had followed our procedures in regards to writing, you know, the citation. It wasn't, didn't really have a whole lot to do with, you know, you know, the facts, circumstances of the violation. It's, did we follow our process? And a, a, a pretty, uh, a tiered fine schedule that, uh, you know, at $150 for, you know, a first violation, $250 for a second and $500 for a third, that, that over time got the community's attention. And, and we've seen a much better effort on the part of property owners now in terms of working with our CSOs, in terms of cleaning up their property and dealing with those issues. In 2007, we adopted that. In 2008, we adopted the, uh, the weird guy, Cody the Code Ranger, to use in a variety of different things. Not only code enforcement, we use it for our animal control and we also use it for bicycle, uh, safety. And it was really a way to put a softer face to, to the issue of code enforcement. And we use this a lot in our educational brochures. We've attached one of our brochures in there and we use it a lot to sort of market the idea of code enforcement. In 2009, we started our East Wheat Ridge project. We'll come back and talk about that more. And then in 2010, and then this year, we've added more seasonal officers to, uh, our current full-time staff. And that's really allowed us to target areas like the alleyways in East Wheat Ridge that if, you know, we've received a lot of positive comments this year about how, how much cleaner they are. In the past, they were, they were areas that tended to create what I would call low-level crime, disorder, graffiti, vandalism, those kinds of things. In 2011, uh, community development moved their property inspector position to the PD. So we were able to take one full-time equivalent out of community development, give it to the PD so that we would, uh, do more of what that property inspector did, which was really sort of commercial area code enforcement, so dumpsters, parking lots, signs, landscaping, those kinds of things. But it's also required us to train our CSOs in property maintenance and get them certified. In 2014, I touched on adding additional seasonal CSOs. And then this year, uh, you know, the key departments in the city, you know, sitting down and talking about code enforcement, code enforcement strategies has sort of lent some synergy to this whole discussion of how can we do this better? So I wanted to paint a picture. Uh, here's, here's what residential code enforcement sort of looks like in, in the city. So, uh, it, it, it's everything from yard sale signs to vehicles parked on grass to weeds, junk, trash, debris, overgrown vegetation. Last year, 1,808, I think, calls for service related specifically to code enforcement. The majority of that in, uh, in, in the residential area as opposed to commercial enforcement. So here are some of the programs and strategies that we're already using. I think for the most part, we feel that we have pretty good ordinances in chapter 15 as it pertains to nuisance codes. Uh, our administrative enforcement process is working very well. We can use abatements when we need to. We budget about $25,000 a year for emergency abatements. And, uh, we generally spend somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 of that when we can't get somebody to comply. Our East Wheat Ridge Community Policing Project, a lot of synergy around this in terms of partnerships with other organizations, community meetings. The education piece, which is also, you know, is important, but then also the enforcement piece that sort of follows that. A recent cleanup days that we did in a small area of East Wheat Ridge, you know, resulted in filling those dumps, all those dumpsters up by about 2 o'clock. We did surveys on, on that. We have citizens that use that, uh, those dumpsters to do surveys. And they all commented about the positive efforts being made by the city to clean up areas that, that were starting to, to reach that tipping point and starting to tip towards areas that were falling into disarray. So pretty positive. The other thing that the police department does is on a monthly basis, we sit down and we have what we call a SAFER meeting. And SAFER stands for Strategic Analysis for Effective Response. And so we look at issues of crime. We look at issues of traffic, but we also look at issues as it pertains to quality of life or code enforcement. So this just sort of gives, I want, I use this slide to sort of give you an idea of what code enforcement, nuisance code enforcement calls for service look like in, in, in Wheat Ridge. And so this is really from, uh, April through the end of, of July. So it sort of gives you a, a four-month, uh, a picture of what code enforcement looks like. So the green areas are areas that, 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 you know, we have very few code enforcement calls for service in. Doesn't mean that we don't have any. It just means that we have fewer. Uh, the blue tends to generate, show the generation of more code, uh, uh, calls. And you'll see that there's different shades here. Uh, some start to get more purple as you move further east, yellow, and then, and then this red area, which, which makes sense because we've been hitting that area from, from a code perspective really hard with our cleanup days and, uh, you know, our alley, alley work that we've been doing in that area. That gives you a sort of a, you know, a four-month picture of what code enforcement looks like. Our seasonal CSO program's been, uh, very successful. You know, from a positive outcome, we're able to deal with a lot of nuisance code issues. From a, from a downside perspective, it keeps my full-time CSOs busy because they have to pick up that workload when our seasonals leave and, and check and follow up on all those, uh, any warnings that have been issued to make sure we bring those properties into compliance. And the other challenge that we've had this year with seven seasonal CSOs is, is a vehicle shortage because we only have three vehicles in our community services, uh, team. And so we've really got to share those vehicles and some investigation unmarked vehicles to get all of those people around. So, uh, so that's been a challenge. So, uh, if we want to look at additional programs, so I know that some of you have approached me and said, "Chief, we'd like to see East Wheat Ridge replicated in other areas of the city." And, and I would too, but there are two aspects to that. One is, you know, we're, from a police department perspective, need to be very, very strategic about how we, we do that because, you know, we've sort of rolled that boulder up the hill as it pertains to East Wheat Ridge and it's rolling down the hill now. And there's a lot of synergy around that and, and people really like that. So from a staffing perspective and a resource perspective, if we want to replicate that in the rest of the city, you know, there's going to be some program costs and there may be some personnel costs related to that if we want to take that sort of proactive approach to, to residential code enforcement. I'm going to transition now from, from residential code enforcement and jump to, uh, the multifamily rental inspection program and have Ken help me with, with that.
Thanks, Dan. And, and the, the photos there, I, I think, not dissimilar to what you see in the, in the residential code enforcement program. The one thing that isn't shown in there for maybe obvious reasons is whether or not you delve into interior issues and, and that's a big policy discussion. So this is our second really topical area in terms of, um, the outline that, that Dan gave you. So multifamily property inspection, multifamily rental inspection program and potentially a registration program is something we've talked about a few times before over the years, perhaps not so much with this council. So we've given consideration to starting a program, um, over the years, but certainly don't have what I would call an active, active program at all as opposed to the, the residential code enforcement program, which we think we have arms around fairly well. Not that we couldn't devote more resources to it, but this would be really a new initiative. And there's a lot of policy questions. So I think, um, we're, we're not trying to delve down into the details of those policy questions tonight, but just kind of gauge your level of interest of is this one area of code enforcement that you have some interest. Uh, we do have a very high rate, relatively speaking, of rental housing, uh, over 45%. Uh, so certainly relatively high relative to, uh, the rest of the metro area and national standards. Uh, we also have relatively comparably low rents when it comes to average rents for multifamily housing or just housing, uh, in, in Wheat Ridge are lower than they are in Jefferson County as a whole and lower than they are in the, in the metro area. And that's neither good nor bad, I guess, but, uh, one impact that it has is that it, um, it hasn't, our experience has been that it's, it's had an impact on people, developers, building new, uh, market rate, uh, multifamily housing product because it's hard to look at the rental rates that you're, uh, generating in Wheat Ridge and saying, "Well, I'm going to be able to pay for this amount of investment in a new construction project." So, uh, that, that rental rates, while it's good from an affordability perspective, uh, does have an impact. And, you know, we think that creating, uh, a multifamily rental inspection and registration program in some form or fashion could, uh, have a benefit of essentially upping the ante, raising rents over time perhaps, uh, and then maybe supporting more the development of more market rate housing. In the survey work that we've done, um, it, it seems to suggest that citizens are interested in creating such a program, uh, in the most recent, uh, citizen surveys that we've done. And it has come up as a priority in city council's strategic plans in the past, notably in 2010 and 2011. At that time, uh, staff did research and, uh, ultimately, uh, at council's direction, drafted an outline of what a multifamily rental inspection and registration program could look like. Ultimately, council elected to not move forward with that. And again, substantively, uh, you know, we think there's some merit still at a staff level to some sort of a program. We understand it's a complicated issue. It's a big policy issue and one that's hard to get your arms around. And I, I think, unless others have other ideas, I mean, I'm not sure we're, we're in a position here tonight to talk substantively about that necessarily, but more just get your general policy direction on yea or nay. Is that, is that part of what you think is important as part of code enforcement? Uh, we did, for reference point, just to get you thinking, provide the, some of the memos that we provided back in, uh, 2012 to speak, um, more substantively to the issue so you could hopefully get your arms around it a little bit. So then moving into commercial nuisance code, I guess this is the next topical area. And again, I would. And again, I would say another area where we don't really have a, a good program in place. It's very ad hoc, very reactive. But that said, it has come up again in, in some of your, also in your 2010, 2011 strategic plan as, as a possible high priority. So I think there's, there's an awareness that commercial corridor maintenance is potentially an issue. The issues are different. You know, it's really about things like landscaping, things like signs, outdoor storage, outdoor display, certainly the weeds as well and just general property maintenance. But they're somewhat different, and we don't get as many calls for service in this area as we do in terms of residential code enforcement. Because it's kind of a different bailiwick, I think, you know, we would need to develop a program, we would need to get training for the staff, the CSOs, who aren't necessarily used to doing this type of, this type of inform, enforcement. It would probably require more resources, relatively speaking, from the Community Development Department as well. Many of these issues, in terms of the landscaping and the signage, relate to the zoning code. And, you know, it's certainly our, our job to support the CSOs in understanding what is and isn't allowed. Additionally, you know, in many cases, you'd need to delve into the building permit history or the zoning history in a particular case. In some cases, the properties that we'd want to be enforcing on a landscape plan, say, might have gone through a, a public entitlement process to get approval of that landscape plan. And helping the CSOs navigate that would certainly have an impact, and we'd need to have a, a program where we were working very closely together. We haven't made an effort to delve into the specifics of that, but just to make you aware that that's the type of resource needs that we'd have if we wanted to get more, more significantly involved in commercial corridor maintenance.
So hotel-
I think, did we skip a slide? Yeah. Yep. Yep, great. So, that's okay? We're doing good. We're only 15 minutes in. We're at least halfway done. So we do think a citywide strategy and approach could certainly have some merits in terms of commercial code enforcement. To state, I hope, the obvious, but education outreach to the business community would be critical before we do anything like that. We think that would be a critical first step to get the community buy-in for why we're doing this and why it's a priority. You know, I think the fact is that there's a pretty long history of not doing a lot of commercial property maintenance. And if we're going to delve into it, we need to delve into it cautiously and, and with an education component. I would point out that with several new developments, both just on a lot-by-lot basis on Wadsworth and 38th, and then looking at two, you know, major redevelopment at 38th and Kipling and 38th and Wadsworth, that we're, you know, we're kind of maybe walking into this area whether we like it or not. Because, you know, when we make, when we have people making tens of millions of dollars of investments, they're probably going to come to us and say, you know, "Why aren't you asking my neighbor to maintain their property?" So I think that's something that we need to be thinking of. And in terms of a programmatic approach, again, education would be critical. We think probably a corridor approach would be critical so you don't just go and say, "Hey, you know, you on Wadsworth, but we're going to everyone on Wadsworth between 35th and 45th," and, and starting the conversation about code enforcement. Inevitably, if you don't, you're going to get the, you know, "What about him? What about her? What about my neighbor? And why aren't you doing something with him?" And the answer needs to be, "We are." And we also think a carrot-and-stick approach should be critical, that, that some sort of a grant program to give people resources to potentially address fairly significant issues when it comes to something like landscaping and potentially irrigation would be, would be critical. Won't speak specifically to staff resources, but obviously this, this program too would, would require additional resources on some level.
So our hotel motel inspection program is also part of code enforcement. We have a, a number of hotels and motels located along our I-70 corridor. Many of these, we would, from a policing perspective, classify as low-tier budget hotels. These are places that generally a family traveling through would, would, you know, would not stay at there generally. They generally tend to have a transitory element to them in terms of the folks that stay there. And also sort of a long-term, uh, uh, transitory look in terms of how long folks stay there. So they're not staying there overnight, you know, from a travels perspective or for a conference. It's, it's more week-to-week, month-to-month sort of arrangement than anything else. So we have a pretty vibrant hotel motel inspection program. So the building inspector, our fire marshal, since many of these fall in the, our Vata Fire Protection District, we have a really good working relationship with the, with that fire marshal in terms of, of addressing some of the issues that we see there. We're pretty, it's a pretty robust program. They're all on a set schedule in terms of how they're inspected. And every time we inspect, so we do both exterior inspections and interior inspections, we run across a number of violations that we try to, to correct that are either safety-related or health-related in terms of, of, of what, you know, our CSOs are seeing there. You know, the other thing for council's attention as it pertains to our hotels and motels, specifically along the I-70 Kipling corridor, is that particular area of the city accounts for a significant portion of the calls for service the Police Department responds on. So we are constantly in that area dealing with a variety of, of, of crime issues and quality of life issues as, as it pertains to, to those hotels and motels. We're in the process right now of, of, of looking at our hotels and motels and looking at some suggested best practices out of the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services Office in terms of, of how can we get these hotels and motels to come to the table and start to, to, to be more engaged in terms of, of who they're renting rooms to and what that, what that looks like. So today, for, for instance, we have tried over the last three years to institute a crime-free hotel motel program. And initially, we had a lot of interest in, in that from some of our hotels, motels, but not others. And that attention to that has waned. So the program is essentially training we would give to employees, managers, and owners on, on how to reduce crime calls for services there. Because we've, we've gotten into a lack of participation, you know, we want to look at an ordinance that would require, you know, that kind of training if they reach a certain threshold as it pertains to calls for service and, and look at a ratio, the ratio of calls for services that relates to calls for service and the number of rooms they have is one model that, that's out there. So we're in the process of looking at that, and, and, and we'll be bringing something forward later this year or early next year in regards to some proposed ordinance revisions that we think might give us, you know, a, a little bit more opportunity to, to, if it's forcefully getting, getting these, these owners to comply so we can reduce that call, you know, the calls for service. But a pretty, I think, good opportunity for the city to engage those property owners and, and look at those areas from, you know, from a, from an economic perspective to say, you know, "How can we make these better, either higher-tier hotels and motels? Or are there others, are there some other opportunities there for economic development?" But, uh, so we'll be bringing those forward soon. So we don't think that there's really a whole lot of, of direction that we need in, in this area unless you've got specific direction that you'd like to give us as it pertains to our hotels and motels. So, covered that. So right-of-way maintenance program is, is another area of concern from a code enforcement perspective, particularly as it pertains to site triangle issues, which the Police Department deals with, but also sort of the overall perception and attractiveness of the city. And I'm going to ask Joyce to speak to, to this a little bit since her department oversees the contract that we have for right, right-of-ways.
So in 2000, between 2003 and 2005, as it's been referenced, the city adopted a policy that property owners were responsible for the right-of-way adjacent to their property, and it was unsuccessful. And it was overwhelming for code enforcement to address that. And all of our somewhat older-looking buildings in older areas just intensified in looking older and more unkept. So in 2005, Council gave a direction and adopted an actual map that we still follow in large part, the majority of the map. We've added a few areas to it, but we contract that right-of-way maintenance out with a company called TerraCare. And you, Council, may remember that you awarded a new contract last year, I believe. So they, a majority of the area that they take care of is 44th Avenue, 38th Avenue, with trash pickup, mowing, herbicide control, weeds, and then certain, the corridor along I-70 on the north, the actual south side of I-70 on the north. And some of those areas were worked out with our past public work directors negotiating and talking to CDOT about their responsibility and the city and CDOT agreeing to which areas would, would be cared for. So sometimes CDOT does not get out as often as we would like them to, but they are responsible for some of those corridors that are not on our map.
Thanks, Joyce. And then the, the last area that we wanted to touch on, it was labeled stormwater. It should have been stormwater and floodplain. There, there are some nuisance code and code enforcement issues around those, and I'd ask Scott to just sort of speak to those and how he sees that and-
Thank you, Dan. Stormwater compliance and code enforcement kind of falls into a couple of different areas. Right now, the bulk of activity, at least from the Public Works Department, we have a stormwater coordinator, Bill LaRoe, who monitors a lot of the stormwater activity in town. A lot of it elicits discharges, which means runoff coming from a site that hasn't been properly controlled by erosion control. Other activities perhaps out in the public right-of-way where we see things going on that, you know, maybe construction materials left in the right-of-way that aren't being protected draining into the storm sewer, those kinds of things. So a lot of those activities are permitted and, and we're able to monitor them those ways. You know, for example, our larger development projects are of a size that they do require a stormwater and a grading permit, so we're able to monitor those usually pretty well. But then there's lots of activities that happen on private property that don't require a stormwater permit, like say, somebody, you know, adding on to their house, and there's a lot of construction material, fill, those kinds of things. Those, we work real closely with the Police Department and also code enforcement, bring, bring those to our attention so that we can, you know, work together departmentally to handle those. A lot of times, it's just general public education. Sometimes the property owners just don't know any better, and we get a lot of cooperation. Other times, we don't. And that's, that's when the Police Department and code, code enforcement helps us a lot on those. Same, same thing with the, with the floodplain. If, if we, if there are matters brought to our attention of activity in the floodplain that either affects drainage in the floodplain or, or just the ability of the water to move through the channels and so forth to drain, you know, Bill works closely with Urban Flood Control District and also PD where we don't get compliance from some property owners. So kind of similar to some of the other things that have been discussed tonight, it's Bill and the rest of the departments here, we keep up the best we can with the resources we have. A lot of it is, you know, complaint or reaction-based. And, you know, if we really want to get more aggressive on some of these things, particularly in the floodplain, becomes a little more of a resource issue. So that's kind of a general summary of what happens with stormwater compliance.
So sort of the outcome in, in all of this, you know, our initial meetings, where we saw that some communities in the United States in issues around code enforcement developed a strategy document. And we looked at a couple of examples of that, and we, we thought a strategy document that sort of outlined, you know, the city's philosophy on code enforcement and the different programs that we offered would be a, a pretty good sort of living document in terms of, you know, who's responsible for what particular issue. It'd be a good document for current council members and future council members, and, and also our citizens as well to have an understanding of, of code enforcement in, in its broad sense, and then the specific programs that we had around that. So we wanted, our plan is, is to develop that and bring, bring a, a document like that back. The other interesting thing, I think, in terms of our last citizens' survey was, you know, 66% of the citizens that responded to the last citizens' survey said they wanted more code enforcement. The code enforcement was important to the city. And, and so it begs the question, you know, that's tonight's presentation, are, is, is the city doing enough around code enforcement? And based on, you know, Council's direction during your strategic planning session, you know, are you satisfied with where we're at in terms of the code enforcement strategies that we have in place, how, how we're enforcing, educating, enforcing, and, and providing program support to those issues? And if there are other areas, and some that we've touched on, like multifamily housing, you know, or more commercial enforcement, what, what would be your specific direction in regards to that so that we could start to put the framework together in regards to what that might look like, and then answer the resource questions in regards to what would it cost for the program and what additional resources might be met? And I'll, I'll let Patrick jump in, and Ken, and Joyce, or Scott if they want to add any more.
I think what you're asking, oh, um, it, so now that we've seen the six areas, really, of, of possible code enforcement, the various areas that are covered, what would you like the staff to work on is the question that I, that I'm hearing from you. And what takes precedence and, and as well as the strategic, strategy document, which would kind of maybe bring up those areas as well, as I think it'd be very valuable for us as, as elected officials, as well as for the citizens to know what's in there. I mean, I learned a few things even in the presentation of, of that I, you know, I can't throw my trash in the street. Well, I guess I didn't do that. But, um, so let's have some input from Council as to, are there some of these areas that they feel is more important than others? Ms. Davis?
So Patrick knows, this is like, um, this is my catch and my get-along. Because living in Wheat Ridge all my life, and I think recently, I just think that our code enforcement, I appreciate everything you guys do. I know it's a thankless job, and it's never-ending. So I don't want any, anything or anyone to think that I don't feel things are being done and, and that the work and the efforts aren't out there. I believe there is, but, um, I really think we need to up the ante. And I'm, you wouldn't want to see me as that little code guy. You don't want my face there because you said he was a nice face. It'd be my face. Because I just think some of this, and where I see it more, you know, thankfully, I think our neighborhood code enforces each other. So I don't see it as much in my neighborhood because, you know, we'll go and trim each other's branches and use a little roundup here and there on each other, and we thank each other for it. So we do our own little neighborhood code enforcement. So I don't see it as much in my neighborhood, but I think the, the businesses and I, I real, and I know, you know, yes, I, you know, I support business and I support, you know, helping the businesses and that kind of thing. But I think there gets to a point, and I think it was kind of alluded to, that it's going to get to a point where there's going to be folks spending a lot of money on public improvements and that type of thing. And when the guy next door to me can't even put roundup on his weeds in the sidewalks or something like that, I think it's just, and, and I'm sorry to say it, but it's inexcusable. I, I mean, to me, and this is like, I'm about ready to, obviously, I'm going on vacation on Thursday, but I mean, it, I, I think there should be no tolerance. I mean, I hate to say it, but you drive down Wadsworth or up Wadsworth, I'll drive up Wadsworth, you're coming from Arvada, you come up, you know, 47th, 46th, I mean, have you seen the weeds in the sidewalks? They're about knee-high in the sidewalks. You see rock flower beds or rock beds that you don't even know they're beds because they're so full of weeds. I, I just think it is inexcusable, and I, I know we need to support the businesses. And I was happy because one of the things I'm thinking is, I know we've done things like with facade improvements and that type of thing. You know, do we do some kind of grant programs that's landscaping improvements or, you know, slurries on, on, on folks', on their properties so that they don't have weeds growing through their, their concrete or their asphalt on their, in their parking lots? I mean, it's just those little things that gives Wheat Ridge the biggest black eye. And unfortunately, you could put me in a car, I'll close my eyes and park me somewhere, and I could tell you if that's a Wheat Ridge sidewalk or a neighboring city sidewalk in many ways. So I think some of that low-hanging fruit that I think makes a big difference on a first glance, you know, is one of the things we need to focus on. first glance, you know, is one of the things we need to focus on. And with that, I also would like to say code enforcement with snow removal. I think, you know, I think it wasn't just a couple council meetings ago that a business was saying, "I don't know that I shovel my sidewalk now, let alone if you make it bigger." Really? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm a single woman and I shovel my sidewalk, I'm out there before I go to work at 5:00 AM and I got a big sidewalk and driveway. I just think that we need to require more of folks and I know people might walk away with some hurt feelers, but I'm strong about this because again, what about the business that does shovel their sidewalk and we're trying to be walkable and the person next to them doesn't? And so the person, you know, the neighbors can't get to it. So, whatever we can do and however we can up the ante, I support. Train me and give me a little code enforcement book because I'll help. That's how strong I feel about it.
Thanks Kristi. It sounds like you're involved with, you're thinking both residential and commercial, you would like to crack down the weeds.
Yeah, and I really think, yeah, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, thank goodness, I don't know as much about the residential because I don't see it as much in my neighborhood. You know, I hear about it, folks call me and I'll help them get things done and I think code enforcement's very, you know, helpful and they do work on that. But I think it's bigger than that and I think even if it's tips and classes or, you know, whatever it might be, but I just, I just think that some of this area is, you know, I think there was, obviously the 66% survey said, you know, let's up the code enforcement and expect more. And I think the other thing, the one last thing I want to say is, there's a lot of these properties, one which I'm thinking of, that we've helped pay for some of their public, you know, spaces and they're going downhill. And again, and I think that's even something to think about in the future, you know, as we pay for some of these public spaces, you know, these people need to be responsible for keeping them up. And I can definitely talk with folks about which, who I'm talking about, but I think that, you know, I think some of that money went towards that infrastructure and I think it is the businesses' responsibility to keep that up once, you know, we helped to build it.
Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to touch on something else because you do bring up a good point, you know, when you, because I drive down the street and Mary, I've got Mary McKenney here who's our CSO supervisor and she often hates it when I come in the office and say, "Mary, what about this property on Kipling or Wadsworth or on 44?" She gets a lot of that, you know, from me. But the part of the challenge for us, quite frankly, is we ask our community service officers to do three things. And it's pointed out in that report. They do code enforcement, they do animal control and they do the parks enforcement education piece. And so, if you go to the bigger jurisdictions around us, you'll see a code enforcement officer, somebody that's specifically devoted to that. That's what they do 100% of the time and they have an animal control officer and they may even have somebody devoted to parks. And we ask our folks that work in community services to really do, you know, three major city functions and two of those are pretty significant in any city function, in code enforcement and animal control. So, you know, you, you know, when you're as leanly staffed as we are in a lot of areas, we ask our folks to wear a lot of, a lot of different hats and it challenges us to do some of the things that you say you'd like to see us do. And I think that there are some ways from a strategy perspective to look at that and say, "How can we bifurcate or be more focused in some of these areas?" But it might require, you know, more resources in terms of staffing and programs.
Mr. Zatulio.
Well, it seems like when we had our discussion at the retreat, we talked about, and I asked the question, "Are you willing to, you know, take the heat for this?" Because when you start proactively doing code enforcement, you get complaints from the people who are getting contacted. But I thought we had kind of talked about, it was a resource issue, we were looking at expanding staff at the code enforcement level and the equipment at the staff level to make up the difference. This, still the biggest area of code, when you could tell, is residential and that's, you know, as residential goes, so does the businesses. And I think that whether it's a rental or a single family or owner occupied, they all have to follow the same rules. And so, if we need, in my opinion, I'd be willing to support more funding and more staffing and more equipment for additional code officers because they are doing three things, they're doing parks, you know, police and policing and then also the code enforcement, like you said, other, so I thought we had kind of talked about expanding the resources to have more, maybe one or two more officers and one or two more vehicles. That's what I was, from the retreat. I mean, you can have all the rental programs you want in the world, I think it's going to have to be on the bricks, talking to people and getting them to comply, whether it's a rental or not.
So, you would like to exceed the program, expand it and dedicate the resources to do that? Genevieve?
I am in favor of the development of your code enforcement strategy plan. I think that's a great idea, that we come up with some kind of comprehensive plan that we say, "This is what we're going to do in the next, say, five years." And what are the personnel and the resources and vehicles or whatever it is that we need? And do we need to separate the duties of the personnel and, you know, have just animal control, have just code enforcement? And that, we as a city would support that. If 66% of our residents are saying they're in support of this, then we will, you know, I would hope that at council we would be in support of donating those resources to get that going. One of my big concerns is the hotel motel personally, because if that uses a lot of your police calls, that's a huge concern to me. It is one of our main entrance points to the city and it doesn't look good and it accounts for a lot of the fire department calls that, you know, Arvada Fire handles. So, I know you're working on that and I appreciate that, but as far as upping the ante, that's one area I would support upping the ante on is, you know, do we really want our police in Wheat Ridge to be spending that much time in that small of an area or what do we want them to be doing overall? So, that's one area I'm interested in. Another one is the right-of-way maintenance. I think that's also entrance points to our city that show, you know, along the I-70 corridor again, what it looks like. And I know CDOT is responsible for some of that and I know we've been working with them recently on some of that, but that area is another area to be interested in. And as far as the multi-family, it says on here that two-thirds of the buildings are nine units or less, correct?
Yes.
And so that this program was targeting 10 and above?
That has been a proposal over the years that we could not necessarily tackle all rental housing, but just projects 10 and above. But I think it's an open policy question. I think what we're trying to point out is, you know, I'm not really sure you're going to get at the heart of the problem if you only limit the program to 10 units above. Not to, you know, my, kind of my understanding of the merits of a 10 unit and above is that you're dealing with, you know, bigger property managers maybe with more ability to pay a registration fee and coordinate an inspection project. But on the flip side, I think it's been, just anecdotally, kind of my experience, that sometimes those are the best managed properties. Not exclusively, but they have a property manager, they're competing with other similar projects and they have to maintain themselves. So, whether it would be a program for every multi-family, multi-families over some threshold or, you know, some other limiting path is an open question.
It seems that we have several single-family homes in Wheat Ridge that are rentals.
Yes.
And that then the residential code would apply to them. And that beefing up the residential code enforcement might target those two-thirds that could be rentals and that would come back to giving you the resources that you need to enforce the code that you have. So, I would be more interested in beefing up the residential overall than the multi-family and the hotel. And those are, those are the areas that I'd be interested in. And then seeing what your long-term strategy plan is, that can we say, you know, what do we want to do in five years and what would that look like?
Mr. Starker.
Thank you Madam Mayor and thank you Chief for a very well-presented presentation not too long. I had a couple of, just a couple of comments and when I look at your calls for service in 2013, you're not quite twice where you were in 2012, so, and the years prior to that, 11, 10, 9. So, it looks like we're either, do you think citizens are availing themselves? Do they have a, do they have a greater perception that when they call for service, that there's something happening and therefore, therefore maybe there are more calls going on or do you have a reason?
Well, I think primarily the reason is because of our refocus on East Wheat Ridge, particularly our alleyways. Last year was, was when we made the decision really to hit all of those alleyways hard, the Sheridan Corridor and all of those alleyways in and so there were multiple contacts and recontacts in that area to clean those alleyways up. I don't know at the end of this year that you'll see quite, quite that number, but it does speak to, you know, to the capacity that we can give if we see a problem area and we can come up with a strategy. The issue and the challenge is, can we do that in multiple areas of the city?
And I think, actually, I think it speaks to the credibility that citizens feel when they call for, when they pick up the phone and call for service that something's going to happen. So, I think that's a commendation to your system as it currently going on, so thank you for that. I noticed in the, when I looked at the hotel and motel code enforcement that are, most of the, it's, you know, to quote, "These locations offer relatively low rates that attract transitory, long-term residents rather than overnight lodgers." And yet we've, are taxed and this is where we're spending a greater, greater portion of our, of our, of our time and energy and cost in this area and it would seem to me that maybe one strategy might be to increase if we're, if we're collecting a tax on lodging less than 30 days, would it make more sense to increase that to 60 days or 180 days or something like that so that we're, if we're renting to longer-term residents and those residents are, take more police time and more resources, should we look at that? And I just sort of offer that and I, you know, I, I think, I agree that you need, you know, a strategy. And part of, kind of part of looking at a strategy, I hope, is a combination of sticks and carrots. I think, I think we need to be, you know, a creative strategy, we'll employ sort of both of those methods so that we can reward the property owners and rental people who make the right decisions. We have a program that helps them make those right decisions and incentivize those decisions as well as, as well as the other side of the coin, that there is a disincentive for not, not doing the right thing. So, I would certainly encourage us to sort of keep up because I think we're raising the whole level of the quality of life in our city and I, we have a great city and I think we have an opportunity to raise the quality of life here. So, thank you.
Well, I think in all of the areas that we're talking about, whether it's the commercial corridor, residential, you know, our right-of-ways and all of those areas, there's an opportunity to be proactive, but being proactive requires individuals that you can devote or dedicate to, you know, that proactive educational piece, you know, writing letters, meeting with property owners and that can be challenging for us sometimes, but I think as, as you and Councilmember Zatulio have seen in East Wheat Ridge, that proactive work before you actually, you know, do that enforcement piece really pays dividends because if you can get the area cleaned up, then you're really just dealing with a few problem properties. But there's a lot of energy, as you saw in all those planning meetings, in terms of putting that, that together, doing it right.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. With respect to the hotel motel issue, knowing that Arvada does not allow the zoning for hotels and motels and looking at the population that incurs the most code enforcement infractions or what have you in the motel hotel area, how many of those instances are deriving from residents of Wheat Ridge residing in those hotels versus transient populations coming through, landing in Wheat Ridge, but not necessarily originating from Wheat Ridge as it relates to those that are causing the trouble?
You know, I can't give you a percentage on that, you know, we could certainly do some, some research in regards to that. I can tell you that it's probably more, more often the case that the folks that are staying there are from outside of Wheat Ridge and they're staying there, you know, long-term for a variety of reasons. Not everybody that's staying there is bad. Lots of times, you know, if somebody's lost a job, that's, that's the only housing option that's available. My point really in talking about, about that, you know, is, is that these hotels and motels have become more, instead of just being an overnight stay or a stay for training or conferences, have become a low, low-cost housing option for a lot of people and sometimes that attracts criminal element to it that keeps us busy.
Sure. And then also, from a land use perspective, is that the highest and best use of that land in that area relative to sales tax generation and the like? And is there any way to incentivize other uses of those properties besides hotel motel or is there that great of a benefit to the city from the existence of those hotels and motels?
Yeah, that's a good point and good question. Ken and I have been talking about that and, you know, the Kipling Corridor is kind of one area that we haven't maybe focused enough on in a, on a planning area and Ken's going to be budgeting for next year some funds to do a Kipling Corridor market analysis, planning documents such as we've done with other corridors in the community, you know, with the, with Appel that was just recently done and the potential work that CDOT could be doing on that interchange, that really could change that area. And so, we're hoping that a study to look at that, what is the best, best uses for that area? Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's one of, that's, that is our major interchange into the city, so I think there are better uses, honestly.
Especially as an entrance to our city. Mr. Zatulio.
So, here's my concern. If you look at that history, this was being discussed in 2000. So, it's 2000, almost 2015 and we're still having the same conversation that I sat here 15 years ago. And so, I really think the idea of having, you come up with a master plan like Genevieve mentioned and then if we need to fund it, that we try to get that plan, if possible, get that plan ready for the 2015 budget. So, if we have to fund more people and more resources, we could do it this year so we can get this, put to bed after 15 years of discussion. Would that be possible, that your, your strategy plan could be brought to council for discussion so we could actually look at funding this in the 2015 budget, timing-wise? Which will identify resources needed. I mean, we have the hotel motel lodgers tax that we passed, the voters passed to help fund some of this and that's probably not even making a, making a dent in it right now, the money-wise?
Yeah, no, it's, it's not. Unfortunately, those revenues are increasing, but it's, it doesn't cover our true costs up there. But budgets for 2015 were due already to my office, so I think any type of program enhancements would probably be at maybe a supplemental next year. I think it will take us some time to factor in what exactly is needed, but doesn't mean it has to be two years down the road. It could, we could start working on a strategy plan and, and I just don't, we won't have full information by the time budget has to come to council. It's, I mean, it's August 1st, budget's coming to you guys in a month.
Well, for me personally, I'd like to see us get the plan, staff to fill out the plan. We review it this fall or this winter, you know, December and November, whatever. And then we have to make a budget, supplemental budget program if we have to add two more people or whatever it is and two more trucks and then get this going because it's just been 15 years. My eyes are bleeding. I see the same, the same data every year. So, and I get what you're, I get what you guys are going through. It's a constant battle, whether it's rental property or owner-occupied property or a multi-family or a business, it's the same problem. It's, we just got to address it one time and get it done. If we need more resources, we need more resources because the citizens have always supported it.
Especially considering the amount of, that we're looking at some very big improvements for the city.
Yeah, and so the one thing I'd like to see, I don't know how Tracy and Genevieve feel about this, but if you're, if you're doing, going through the plan, this cleanup program for East Wheat Ridge, I think it'd be really beneficial for District 4 behind 44th Avenue, north of the highway there from Kipling or Wadsworth West, you know, all those triplexes and duplexes and there's, there's mattresses laying back there and there's a lot of stuff that, I mean, if we could do another cleanup program and we'd have to get the resources, like you said, keep the East Wheat Ridge going and then also add that other section of District 4, if they were, you know, for it because it's bad behind Pietras and that whole area to the highway, whether it's weeds and junk and just appearance.
So, we're having those discussions now in terms of identifying other hot spot, what I call hot spots in the city and that's certainly, you know, that 44th and Garrison, the area west of Kipling are all areas that we're looking at, but, but it's part of that, you know, part of its strategy. But it's part of that, you know, part of its strategy and part of its resource and part of its problematic.
Can that be part of that strategy plan? It could be, can it be addressed in there?
Oh, absolutely.
So what I'm hearing is that we're looking for a strategic plan Mr. Pond wanted to speak to, as well as kind of a what's needed, prioritize it so that the council can really get in and get after this instead of talking about it for another 15 years. Mr. Pond?
Well, to that point, I agree with all the comments. I, not being lazy, but frankly, I think all of the bulleted and presented items are worth focusing on in the strategy. So I wouldn't presume to isolate any one of them. In some ways, I see the interconnectedness in terms of an enforcement action and how you approach it. And they all, at the end of the day, matter towards the goal of having a beautiful Wheat Ridge. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't exclude anything, and I don't have any to tell you are more important to me than others. What I agree with, I guess I just want to restate it, because everyone said it to some extent, I do want to see the strategy. I realize that we're not going to be able to get something for the 2015 budget, but I do think we should expect to do a 2015 supplemental. So we ought to make sure that at least we've got something put together by the, even maybe during late budget cycles so that we can talk about the impending supplementals that we're going to see in 2015. And to that end, to me, the strategy really is about a five-year plan, I think, at a minimum. And it's actionable and staged so that you really are, you know, that we're hearing from you, what's the appropriate ramp up? And then it's, and that by kind of doing this in some sort of kind of forecasted way, you can anticipate the personnel increases over a five-year period. You know, when would you split functions, et cetera? Like, maybe that's year three, something like that. But I do think, and what council actions would have to take place in any of those things. And so that literally there's kind of a matrix, an actionable matrix of, you know, here's a budget, here's the budget actions that need to taste plate, this is the, these are the things that council is going to have to take, policy questions to council is going to have to take action on, it's going to have to come up to steady session, it's going to be an ordinance or it's going to be a resolution. And that we've kind of, you know, really put this together. In many ways, I want to call it an action plan as opposed to a strategy plan. You know, that it, you know, that it's, that there is, it's an actionable document. That'd be my preference.
And this needs, really needs to be a multi-departmental plan. I mean, it's not, this is just isn't the PD doing the enforcement piece. It really impacts, you know, parks and rec, public works and community development in particular. So that strategy's going to have to envelop all those areas as we look.
Well, I could see where it may come back and say Parks needs a person, you need two, maybe, you know, it's going to depend on what you come up with. But I think everybody, it sounds like everybody here is interested in the supplemental budget if we have to, or par for the supplemental budget to fund this for next year. That's what I heard. I mean, Christie was in high school still when this started.
I think also, we don't, we don't want to forget that there's also that, in addition to making it a cleanup action, that along with it, that we're asking for it to be a little bit of a reward system as well. I believe Mr. Starker mentioned that, and I know you and I have discussed that, that it can't be all just coming down on. But there also has to be a pride factor that we introduce. So this whole plan has to be citywide. Anything else on this one? All right.
Thank you. I think I've got what I need to keep me busy for three or five years.
I think we can move on to item number four, which is, thank you very much, Chief. What?
Make it so?
That was, that was good for you. We have a, the last item is our 38th Avenue width designation. This is the ballot question and the proposed language. Mr. Star, Mr.?
Goff.
What's your name?
Mr. Goff. I'm honored she's calling me Mr. Starker.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. It's as simple as that. This is, as you all know, you directed staff to prepare an ordinance to submit the street width question to the voters. City Council did approve it by resolution. However, it will not, the resolution doesn't become effective until the voters vote on it and approve it. If they don't, the resolution will not become effective. So this is some suggested ballot language I put together, and this will follow the same timeline as the sales tax question. So first reading would be August 11th, second reading August 25th. So would like to hear your input on the ballot language.
Mr. D'Atulio?
I think it's fine.
That was simple.
Really, I mean, it does, it says everything it's supposed to say, and it's clear. If they can't figure that one out, I don't know, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Urban?
I would like to see where it talks about the feet in different places to indicate, for instance, respect to the 47 feet from up on the street to High Street, that we indicate that it's 47 feet narrowed down from a particular existing street width so that people understand what exactly is occurring. The way that it's written is written, it's as though we're establishing a yet-to-be-established street width for 38th. But there is an existing street width, and it would be nice to show what this ballot question is doing and what type of narrowing that is occurring based on its passage. So that would be my first suggestion, that we indicate how much it's being narrowed in the given spots that we indicate on the language. And then the next item, I think, is necessary as we indicate all the benefits associated with the passage of the street width designation. We do nothing to indicate what the costs might be or that it not to exceed a certain dollar amount or an estimate of some kind to let people know that we have not identified a funding source for this. It is estimated to be this much and a certain not to exceed number so that people know what they're getting themselves into. I think if you're going to advertise the benefits, the costs should be equally advertised so that people can vote fairly on the issue. So those are my only two concerns.
Okay, Mr. Urban would like specific language as to how much it's being narrowed as well as cost estimates. Mr. Starker?
You know, I guess, bless you. It's, you know, I think it's a pretty straightforward proposition, the way it's written. I mean, I, you know, I had heard some talk about flowering the, you know, flowering an introduction to talk about the benefits, you know, that it was in concert with the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan and some of the benefits that that would accrue. But I think it's pretty straightforward.
Any other commentary? Ms. Davis?
Patrick, will some of that detail as far as like the width at the 47? I mean, I don't think, I mean, I'm Joe Public, and I don't know that Joe Public knows 47 feet, but will some of that be in the Blue Book information type of book?
Blue Book is only for taper questions. So there won't be, there won't be a pro and con statement in the Blue Book for this question.
If I can ask, is it necessary in any way to mention that it is required by their city charter?
I don't know if it's necessary. You could, you could put it in there, that this was a city charter designation of street width is a city charter requirement for city council. City council submitting it to the ballot is not necessarily a city charter requirement. There's a protest process that allows for that. But Mr. Doll, do you want, you have any comments?
I think it's not that common to say under what order you submit.
Got it. As a?
Charter markets. You're satisfying that, you're following one of those paths, but it's not common to articulate that.
Okay.
Surplus issue.
Would it be informative? Informative to the public?
Yeah, I mean, there's always a balance, of course, between asking a question and asking a question while you're informing.
Right.
And you're going to hear a lot of what's going on here, information all around, which you should be settled with. But I do not think that I would weigh the process basis.
Got it. Add some more. Mr. Pond?
I guess I just want to agree with Mr. Starker and Mr. D'Atulio that as written, I think it's straightforward and does what it needs to do. So that's what I would agree to.
So I'm hearing a general consensus that Mr. Goff here has done a pretty good job on writing it out and, don't go that far, and that we would like to leave it the way it is. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I'll get a star.
Thank you. That's all I have on the agenda.
That means that we can ask for any particular elected official reports? Anyone? Mr. Urban?
I would like to ask for an update on that dab supply location to indicate there was a hearing today.
Yeah, I did get an update on the court hearing today, but an update in general, yeah, they were cited into court for, first of all, it's a business, that is a business license to sell parefinalia only, pipes, bongs, whatever materials. They, under investigation from our police department, our city attorney's office, found out that they were operating some type of social club and providing a fee for that. They feel that it's in line with the constitution, state constitution, that this is a private social club. But both, both the state constitution and the city's ordinances do not allow social clubs. So we've done a cease and desist letter to tell them to stop doing business. They were sent to court today. I need to get an update on that. We're going to wait until the court hearing to give them their due process before we actually went in and enforced the cease and desist at this point. So as soon as we get an update on what happened at court today, we'll let you know. But we are moving forward with it. There was a Channel 9 story the other day. Their attorney is pretty adamant that they're going to force the issue. So we'll have to make a decision in-house. I don't know, Mr. Doll, if you have any updates based on what? So, but we are, we are, we're kind of walking through the process with them and trying to give them their due process, but, and their court hearing. And so I'll let you know how that went today.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you all for doing a great job tonight. We had some, some big issues to get through, and I think we did it. And I think we can adjourn.
I have circus tickets for you guys. As a sponsor, we got a bunch of tickets. And the organizers of the Carnation Festival Circus really want you guys to use these and don't give them away to maybe needy groups, because there's a lot of tickets going to needy groups and kids, kid groups. So they would really like you to use these, or your, or your family members.
Stand there and say.
And there's different dates and times. What's that? Oh, yeah, you can get them whenever. So there's the August 16th, 4:00 p.m. show, 7:00 p.m. show, August 15th, the 7:00 p.m. show, August 17th, 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. show. So if you want tickets, let me know.